Well, good morning, everyone. Well, one, two, three, one, two. Okay, here we go. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to January thirty first, two thousand twenty four Planning Commission meeting. Do we do the announcement first regarding the Zoom and audio first?
Oh, let's do the flag salute first.
The flag salute. Okay, so let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to your office, for which it stands, one nation, united in this court.
Okay, and if we could have, oh, there it is, the TV coverage announcement, it should be at Lopez.
Thank you, and good morning to the Commission. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Center Upper Television, CSB TV, Channel twenty at nine AM in the South Coast, along Pocatello Valley, San Maria and Arca areas. We broadcast the Planning Commission hearings on Fridays at five PM on CSB TV, Channel twenty. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website and will be available for download in a day or two. Should I move on to roll call?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Bradley?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
And Chair Martinez?
Here.
Thank you.
Now, we move on to the Agenda Status Report.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners, in regards to the status of the agenda. We have two items on the agenda. The first is a capital improvement program, comprehensive conformity review. Staff is ready to present on that for Commission's action. And then we have a project, the Hidden Canyon Testwell Production Plan, and staff and applicants are ready to present on that as well. So Agenda stands as it currently is published. Moving to the projection report, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Our next scheduled hearing is next week, which is February seventh. There are no items projected. I recommend that we take an action and cancel that hearing. I don't foresee any items being agendized between now and next week. The next hearing after that is February fourteenth. Two items projected on that date, which is a equestrian facility, and then we had continued agriculture enterprise ordinance to be heard on that day as well. Moving further down the month, February twenty eighth, we have two items projected on that, a project at El Capitan Canyon Campgrounds, and then the comprehensive plan annual progress report. Then, moving into March, we have three items on that. Two appeals. One is a ag water well. The other one is a residence in Michigan Canyon. And then we have a general plan amendment for updating the GHG thresholds of significance. As of right now, nothing's projected for March thirteenth. And March twenty seventh, housing element rezones on March twenty seventh. And then April third, we have it also scheduled for a second hearing for the housing element rezones. So one item that I failed to indicate is the next series of hearings up until the end of and the beginning of March is going to be here in Santa Barbara. I don't have a date when the North County will be reopened at this time. It's, we're looking at March, but as of up until March sixth, we'll still be here in Santa Barbara, so all of February, and then in March sixth, we'll be here in Santa Barbara. And then we'll be looking at potentially having some hearings in Santa Maria once it reopens.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. So hearing that February seventh is a scheduled date for our Planning Commission. I'd like to hear the comments of any Commissioners who have, or at least a motion from the Commissioners as to removing that date from our list of meetings. A second?
I'll second.
Okay, and all, let me ask if all agree. Say aye?
Aye.
All right. So February seventh is off calendar here.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I just have one question on the projection report. Can I pose that now?
Yes.
The Montecito Planning Commission, what did they do with the housing element policy document? Did they take action on that? I'm just curious, and I forgot. Or, and can maybe we understand that?
I can speak to that, Chair and Commissioner Bradley. In regards to the projection report, that item was not presented to the Montecito Planning Commission. It came to the County Planning Commission and the board.
Because, because
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, we can bring that up to, we can bring that up to in the Director's Report.
Oh, okay.
We can loosely have the Director's Report on that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. It's almost like you passed the ball across the row right there. Okay, look forward to that. So let's move on to the public comment, and this is a public comment time where the, anyone has the opportunity to present or make comments regarding matters which are not on today's agenda, and do we have anything or anyone wishing to make such comments? Okay, well, seeing none, let's move on to the Planning Commissioners' informational reports.
I have a little one.
Yes.
I attended the very well-constructed and well-presented hearing on the environmental, draft environmental impact report programmatic for the housing element last week here in Santa Barbara. I couldn't make the one in North County, though. We had talked about that last time. Anyway, it was, staff did a great job. There were only about six or seven people in the room, including several people from the City of Galita staff and a few agents, and then I think there were ten people on Zoom, so it was not as highly attended as maybe I expected. But I really appreciated staff did a great job in explaining everything about the programmatic EIR and a lot of Q and A to members of the public that were there. So kudos to staff.
Great. Any other comments from any other Commissioners? Well, I know I have one in regards to myself. I attended the meeting which was put on regarding the Santa Maria levee situation for the trail there, and that was on the eighteenth, and I know Commissioner Reed was there too. And it was very well-attended by the agricultural community, and the staff present there did a good job in handling a situation which is a hot-button issue. And it became very apparent to me that just having a short meeting is not enough to address all those issues, but I hope that more communication will occur in putting together that report. And yeah, that's what I would have to say. Commissioner?
There we are. A question about that. That was a meeting of what? I mean, was that, was that a county meeting?
It wasn't a county meeting, per se. It was the one that was following up on the report that they were doing an analysis of the report. I think it was the, that they were commissioned to do by the county supervisors. And they were doing the report, and they went and met as part of their public meeting sessions to meet at least that element, and that is the growers that are by the levee, surrounding the levee, or affected by the offsets or I know I'm using the wrong word. It's not offsets, but setbacks. There we go, setbacks. And what at the meeting, what really was it being addressed? I didn't make any public comments there because obviously the rules against that. But what was being addressed was any aesthetics, such as walls, fences, to address the concerns regarding people going from a possible trail onto agricultural properties of what's going to be the impacts of other situations, which, for instance, the agricultural recreational matter that we were just addressing at the last meeting, we were talking about offsets or setbacks in regards to that. So that wasn't even addressed, but it was at least noted in it. And, you know, what, the fences, I would say, in regards to what people are talking about, brick and mortar fences, you know, on the boundaries of each one of them, and then people are talking about how to cross over. There is also addressing the issues that, there are agreements that address the levee itself, which nobody seems to have, but do exist, and of also the agreements regarding the surrounding area by Blosser, which, when they did eminent domain, that there was also an agreement there that nobody seems to have, but they know exists. So it's bringing up more issues than what has been addressed in the past, which is what the goal was, I would say, of a meeting like that.
Yeah, I've attended meetings on it, and I think you're absolutely right that it's a hot-button issue that will, their lengthier discussion. So I'm glad you both were able to attend it.
Yeah. Commissioner Reed?
Oh, yeah, I also attended that meeting. It was actually put on by a group called Facts for Farmers, which is an agricultural group. It was conducted by Public Works Department, and Mr. Sneddon was there, because it's been assigned to the Public Works. It's being considered as some sort of a conveyance. One of my other reasons for attending, I know several of the growers that could potentially be affected. And many of the issues that surfaced, I thought, hoped to be instructive for our later work on the ag enterprise ordinance. So it was, it was very useful, but it was very demonstrative of the significance and, well, the emotional effects of the setback ordinances and their potential effects. So it was very useful.
Any other comments from the Commissioners or reports? Seeing none, then let's move on to the minutes for January tenth of two thousand twenty four to be considered and approved. Commissioners?
I found something. I'm curious if Commissioner Cooney or Bradley found it.
I didn't look at it closely this week. You win.
I just neglected to update the results of the election at the top. And the members of Commissioner attendance.
I was going to comment about that, but I was just holding back, yeah. Any other findings or comments?
I'll move approval subject to that correction.
And do we have a second? Okay.
I'll second.
All in approval, if you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty, so moving on to the Director's Report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. First thing I want to say is that our housing element was found to be in compliance by the state about a week and a half ago, so that was very exciting news. That means that we are no longer subject to new builder's remedy applications. There were a couple in the pipeline that did not squeak through that we heard about. We didn't actually, they didn't attempt to submit anything subsequent to our, the state's finding, but we are now in the process of, we had our two public workshops on the adequacy of the EIR. And so now we're working towards the workshop that the board is going to hold with the developers of some of the key rezone sites on the South Coast. And we're looking for a date for that right now to make sure that we have that before we come back to the Planning Commission to review the rezones and for your recommendation to the board. I did want to note that we may be trying to squeeze in a special hearing. Right now, we're scheduled for back-to-back dates, but we are thinking that we might try and do something like we did with the tankering, I'm sorry, the trucking, Exxon trucking proposal, which was we had a Wednesday and a Friday, or we might have a Wednesday and a Monday, so we can get in all of the public comment, have enough time for public comment, and then have another formal hearing date. We're trying to compress this as much as possible because we actually do have a due date. There was a due date of February fifteenth for us to complete our rezones by, and so we are going to be a little bit late in doing that. We've talked with the state about that, and we are scheduled to have a meeting with them, but that's the thinking right now. And so I just wanted to make sure that the Commission would be comfortable with us scheduling a special meeting to, to consider the rezones. Do I have any objections to that concept?
Any comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, yes, I just wanted to understand the interplay between the Commission and the Board of Supervisors with regard to those dates. So you mentioned late, and I certainly was anticipating that, but the board's hearing is not set specifically at this point.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, that's correct. We haven't said it yet because we just didn't know exactly what would happen with the PC, but we're looking at going in May to the board.
And the state's reaction was, well, you did a great job on the plan, but it's too late.
They didn't quite say that. We're trying to schedule a meeting with the compliance team now. They said, you know, if the individual that we were working with, Paul McDougall, said, if you're making, you know, progress and you're not falling too far behind, we'll probably be okay. But if we take too long, there is a risk of them deciding that we're out of compliance again until we get the rezones done. So that's why we're trying to move as quickly as we can.
That's my concern.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bradley?
I guess we were talking about maybe March for Board of Supervisors. Just looking at the applications was criteria that they already adopted, right? And then it would come back to us. That's why we're talking about the special hearing dates, and then we would make a recommendation. So the May date you're talking about for the board is for final adoption of the rezones?
Correct.
Okay, and as long as you keep that progress schedule clipped like that, then you're thinking state's fine.
That's our, that's our, that's the initial read we had from the state, but we need to confirm that.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm curious, and I had some comments from the public about what it's going to look like for us. I mean, we, I presume we're going to be using the same criteria that the Board of Supervisors adopted, and I don't think we ever, you know, fussed with that here. And there are a lot of projects in those rezones, so are, I mean, at what point are we? What point can you tell me how those will go? I mean, is every applicant going to get ten minutes, and we're going to get a map? And then you're looking for us to make a recommendation through a spreadsheet, or, I mean, how is it really going to go? It's pretty compressed.
Yeah, sure. So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bradley, we don't, we're not going to be doing developer presentations to the PC, so they will have their three minutes, just like everybody else.
Okay.
Yeah, and so the reason we wanted to have this workshop with the board before the PC is so you would have an opportunity to watch it and be aware of what those projects contain and what kind of benefits they provide to the community. So what we imagine is we will be presenting the options to the Planning Commission. You may have questions about that. We have the tool, the Balancing Act, which is a tool we're going to use in the hearing. So you can figure out as a, you know, as a commission, how we're going to select sites and which sites need to be selected in order for us to meet our arena allocation, right? So we actually have a viable housing plan. So it, I mean, I think the tool will be very helpful in that process. And then collectively, we're going to have to have a majority make a recommendation on which sites they recommend to the board to rezone.
Okay.
And then you'll be taking public comment, obviously, as part of that.
So it'll be something like a motions coming up with a slate of projects, and then?
Slate of sites, I would call it.
Slate of sites, okay. And then, so the ones that get approved from us at that point, my understanding is that we actually don't see them again, right? Then they meet the objective design standards, and they are plan-checked by staff, and so we don't have a touch on them again for a rezone or a development plan of any kind. That is the last time we see those cases.
So Commissioner Bradley through the chair, that is correct. Sites that we rezone. Well, there's a couple of criteria they have to meet. So it has to be, the site has to be at least twenty units per acre or more. It has to be on a site that's large enough to produce at least sixteen units, and it has to provide twenty percent low income, lower income. So if, on sites that get rezoned and they have a project that meet that criteria, it is ministerial. It's not discretionary. If it does not meet that criteria, then they would come back through hearings. So, and then if there's builder's remedies, projects on sites that don't get rezoned, those would come through the formal hearing process and be subject to CEQA.
That helps a lot, because I've heard very, and I've actually, I think that maybe the explanation has changed over the year in terms of how this is all going to play out, so that really helps clarify. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Bradley, did you still have your question regarding Montecito?
Oh, that's true.
So typically, when we have a county-wide plan that doesn't have any, this didn't have any direct, specific impacts just on Montecito, those projects just come to the County Planning Commission. So it did not go to the Montecito Planning Commission. They don't have any sites in the site inventory for rezoning. They have some pending projects, but they don't have any
Oh, I get it.
Sites that are going to be rezoned.
Okay, I think that helps. I can explain that the next time I'm approached. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Park?
Yes, I actually have four questions. Are you done with your presentation on the housing element, or were you, did you have more? Okay, so let me go ahead and ask these now. You mentioned it, or rather, Commissioner Bradley asked whether we would be using criteria adopted by the board. Did the board actually adopt criteria, or did they just discuss it?
Commissioner Park through the chair, they didn't really adopt any criteria, but they did discuss it. Yeah.
Okay. On the workshop, I'm very interested in that, and I'm very interested in attending that, because as everybody who attends our hearings knows, you know, it's one thing to watch it on television or watch a video, but all the conversations in the aisle and out in the hallway and the vibes you feel and all that, it's just a different experience to be there. That's why I'm here today, right? and the vibes you feel and all that, it's just a different experience to be there. Um, that's why I'm here today, right? Um, and, uh, but do we have Brown Act issues, Mr. Pettit, if we go there and sit together and hold hands and watch the, the workshop?
No holding hands.
Well, I'd like to hold hands with Commissioner Bradley.
Commissioner Park through the chair, uh, similar to the participation in the, um, programmatic EIR hearing, um, I think the same issues would apply here, and I'm happy to follow up with Commissioners on attendance at that, at that workshop and provide some guidance there.
Okay.
But they couldn't, they can't attend under cir- cir- circumstance, sorry.
Chair and Commissioners, there, there are circumstances in which Commissioners can't attend other noticed Brown Act meetings. Um, I would just like to, to have a little more information on the, the circumstances of this workshop, and I'll follow up with Commissioners.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, two more questions. Uh, there's a question about Glen Annie because I was at a, 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 what would I call that? It was, uh, kinda like a workshop, community forum the other day on that, and, um, I thought I heard from the developers that they thought there was something somewhat unique about their project that would require it to go through more of the normal pant, planning process, uh, even if it's rezoned. And, and of course, I don't ever remember the details on things like that.
That is, thank you for bringing that up because I failed to mention this. Um, if a project has another discretionary action attached to it, like a subdivision, it is not ministerial.
Uh, oh, and does that have a, um, something like that?
It does.
Yeah, okay.
It does. So I'm sorry, I'm really glad you brought that up because I, I have consistently forgotten about that aspect of it, but we have talked to the state about that and they said, so if they're doing a subdivision, then all bets are off on the ministerial component.
It, it's a practical import because, you know, this thing I tell people, well, you can call me up. I don't do much. And just, uh, we'll, we'll talk before these hearings and so forth, and, and if, if, if they know that they'll have further opportunities to participate, the, the public likes to know that, so.
You're correct.
So anyway, appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you for re, um, triggering that for me.
Okay, so I've been to a number of candidate forums and other things. It's the political season. And of course, there are folks out there that wanna tell us all how we're doing such a bad job, uh, every one of us, and, um, uh, and you, and you hear about, why didn't you choose this parcel? Why didn't you do that? And, um, you know, like every squirrel finds a nut sometimes, and, and so somebody did stumble across a parcel that I represented way back in my private practice days and other things, and I did kinda wonder, well, why wasn't that included? And so what, what I'm wondering is will there be an opportunity for people to bring up and for us to review, uh, parcels that haven't yet been identified?
So Commissioner Park through the chair. The short answer is no, not at this point because we've already completed, we're, we're finishing up our environmental review. Now, does that mean those sites couldn't come forward and seek a rezone on their own? Sure, they could, and they might even be able to tear off the environmental document. But we don't have, we're not in a position to be able to include them in the rezones per se um, at this point because we just haven't done any environmental analysis on it.
So it would have to be, uh, oh, a rezone project like the Solomon Hills or some of those where they've come up in that process, but it's, I, I mean, it's of interest because, uh, uh, we, we look at these and we look at their impacts and think about, oh, what would be a better one and this and that, if there's, there's one in this particular one is, is, is a large parcel that's completely inoperable in the business it's had for a couple of years and, and you, people brought it up and thought, well, you know, actually that might be worth talking about. It's in Galena.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I hope I haven't muddied the waters too much with my questions, but it looks like some of it's worth navigating. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? I, I have a couple. Um, this housing element, i- is this an annual thing? Or is this something that is set for, you get it approved by the state and it exists for what kind of period?
Eight years.
Eight years, okay. I've been asked that question and I've been stumped every single time.
Yeah.
Now, I've also been noticing and just i- in regards to the legal newspapers I receive, the, the municipalities or counties or whoever, like Huntington Beach and so forth, that haven't complied with this, that's the one that the AG is, the Attorney General's is filing all these lawsuits. Courts are entering all these judgments saying you can't do any new developments until you first do your housing element, so I'm following the right thing when I'm, when I'm reading that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. It's a very interesting thing for the public, I mean, because people have asked, you know, what's gonna happen if you don't do this? Well, there's some examples coming up now that people are getting hurt on, uh, because it, they took the other way.
That's correct. I think the, the most recent example is the city of Beverly Hills. Uh, there was a judgment against them. They can't issue any building permits for anything except new housing units.
Yeah, that's, that's the one I read about, um.
Yeah. No TIs, no interior remodels. Mm-hmm, I mean, the next tick after that is we take over your permitting for you, right? The state can do that.
I'm sorry, and at one point, there was a discussion about, um, not passing through federal gas tax money. I mean, you, you know, a couple of years ago, they were throwing all the threats out to make sure that everybody complied. Is that still on the table?
I, uh, yeah, Commissioner Bradley through the chair, I can't speak to that one in particular as to what, I, I don't think that actually came to fruition, but there's all sorts of grants that the counties or cities are ineligible for.
Yeah.
But there, I think there's some interest in some of the board members' part to pursue a pro-housing designation, which does give you advantages towards applying for grants. Um, I don't, we, we won't be able to make it this year, I think, but I, I, my sense is there's some board members that are interested in pursuing that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the Commissioners?
And I just have one more thing to tell you. Um, on future board items, we have the Housing Bill Ordinance, um, that is gonna be going to the board on the thirteenth of February. And then the Key Site H Development Agreement will be going on March twelfth to the board, that we heard. And then the Music Academy Appeal, um, is going on May seventh to the board, and that's it.
Commissioner Cooney? Okay, Key Site H, that's the one we did last week, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Alrighty, so, um, then let's move on to the standard agenda items here.
Uh, the following's hearing, um, at the request of Planning and Development Staff on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to review the proposed new projects in the five-year CIP for fiscal years twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight and report to the Board of Supervisors as to their conformity with the Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Government Code Sections six-five-four-oh-one and six-five-four-oh-two.
Not for me. Okay, so we'll start with the staff report.
Uh, good morning, Chair, members of the Commission. Um, we're glad to present to you the Comprehensive Plan Conformity Review for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program.
I'm gonna have to interrupt really quick here. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm still learning all this stuff, but thankfully Commissioner Cooney is to my left. Um, I'd have to ask any Commissioners for any ex parte communications regarding this matter, which has now been called. Commissioner Cooney?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yesterday, uh, I had a Zoom call, uh, with three uh, prominent residents of the Cuama Valley, Steve Gleisman, Robbie Jaffe, and Jeff, uh, Kuiper, who is, uh, with Los Padres Forest Watch. The, um, the Zoom conference took fifty-nine minutes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, sorry.
Yes.
I don't know why I start with I'm sorry. It's, it's easier. Um, so we don't, we don't need ex parte on the, this particular item, and then Commissioner Cooney's, I think, is related to the next item.
You're right. I was not listening when we started with the wrong project.
Okay.
You could have faked it. They were really interested in that CIP. We covered that first, right?
There you go.
I think the same, we're just being rather thorough than dismissive, huh? All right, so then we do go to staff. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and so again, uh, we're pleased to present our Comprehensive Plan Conformity Review for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program, and, uh, Ms. Lila Spring, our project manager, will give the presentation.
Good morning, Chair Martinez and Commissioners. So the purpose of this hearing today is to review the new projects included in the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, as referred by the Board of Supervisors, as, and to consider whether each of these projects conforms to the county's Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Government Code Sections six-five-four-oh-one and six-five-four-oh-two. In the following four slides, I will give a brief overview of the CIP process and the Government Code requirements. So the CIP is a compilation of proposed capital projects that are intended to implement various plans, including the County Comprehensive Plan, to be carried out during the five-year planning period. It is prepared and administered by the County Executive Office and is updated annually. This slide shows how today's hearing fits in with the annual CIP process as a whole. The process begins with each county department submitting proposed new projects to the CEO. Next, the CIP is developed by the Budget and Research Division. Then the Board of Supervisors conceptually approves the CIP and refers the CIP projects to your Commission for conformity determination. Today, your Commission will hear staff recommendations on CIP project conformity with the Comprehensive Plan, and staff will recommend that you forward your findings to the Board of Supervisors to receive and file at a hearing. Now, to provide a bit of background on the relevant Government Code Section requirements, Government Code Section six-five-four-oh-one requires that the county prepare a list of new projects recommended for planning, initiation, or construction in the ensuing fiscal year. So this is the CIP. Government Code Section six-five-four-oh-one also requires that the county perform a programmatic level review of all new capital projects, and specifically that review seeks to determine whether the projects conform to the Comprehensive Plan, including all relevant community plans. Finally, Government Code Section six-five-four-oh-one requires that the Planning Commission report the conformity determination to the Board of Supervisors. Government Code Section six-five-four-oh-two requires a more specific project-level review of new capital projects that require any of the following: acquisition or disposal of real property, vacation or abandonment of streets, or construction of public, public buildings or structures. As with Section six-five-four-oh-one, Section six-five-four-oh-two requires a conformity determination of relevant projects with the Comprehensive Plan, and also requires the Planning Commission to report the conformity determination to the Board of Supervisors. I will now provide a summary of staff's review of the new projects in the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight CIP and our recommended findings. So the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight CIP includes, uh, thirty-eight new projects, and this includes twenty-nine projects that had not been reviewed previously, six projects that were reviewed previously but which lacked sufficient information at that time to determine conformity and for which new av- information is now available, and three projects that were found in conformity previously but changed significantly since that time so as to warrant additional review. Of the proposed new projects, five are flood control district projects, nineteen are Transportation Division projects, three are General Services projects, two are Laguna County Sanitation District projects, two are Resource Recovery and Waste Management projects, and seven are Parks Division projects. So of the thirty-eight projects reviewed by staff for Government Code Section six-five-four-oh-one determination, staff concludes that twenty-three projects conform to the Comprehensive Plan, and fifteen projects are inadequately prepared to move forward with conformity determination at this time and will require additional review. Eleven of the new projects reviewed by staff triggered Government Code Section six-five-four-oh-two review. And just as a reminder, projects and activities subject to Section six-five-four-oh-two include construction of public buildings or structures, property acquisitions or disposal, and abandonment of roadways. For the Government Code Section six-five-four-oh-two conformity review, staff concludes that eight projects conform to the Comprehensive Plan, and three projects are inadequately prepared to move forward with conformity determination at this time and will require future review. We will now move on to SEQUIC compliance for this conformity review. The CIP serves as a funding mechanism that helps to prioritize funding for projects. However, it does not appropriate funds or otherwise commit the county to particular projects. The CIP, including this Comprehensive Plan Conformity Review, is therefore not considered a project as defined by SEQUIC and therefore is not subject to environmental review. The next step for this conformity review is that staff will forward this Commission's conformity determination to General Services, who will present it to the board as part of the board's final consideration for approval of the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight CIP. The next CIP is anticipated to be brought to the board for conceptual approval in early spring of this year, and it will then be forwarded to Planning and Development for processing. We anticipate returning to your Commission in late spring to consider a conformity determination for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine CIP. To conclude, staff recommend that the Planning Commission take the recommended actions as listed on page one of the January twenty-third staff report. Those recommendations are also summarized on this slide. That concludes our presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Commissioners, uh, any of you have any questions? Commissioner Bradley?
I do, yeah, because I'm a public works nerd, so I've done a lot of these for the city of Galena, but not, they're not as voluminous as the county's, not a surprise. Um, so when we say it's not adequately, a project's not adequately prepared, it just means that it sits there and probably rolls forward to a point where project plans have gotten developed, and we may see it in a future year, right?
Commissioner through the chair, that's correct. So usually it just means the project's either not developed enough or has initiated the SEQUIC process but hasn't completed it, so we can't make, um, take that into consideration.
I'm glad you brought up SEQUIC. Uh, so on the, on your slide, like, uh, slide fourteen, uh, when you're talking about the exemption for the six-five-four-oh-one, right? Are those citations under SEQUIC? Are those exempt? Uh, like, is, these, the action today would be considered an exemption under SEQUIC, right? You, you cited on that slide, one-five-oh-six-oh-C-three, and I just looked it up. Or because it's not a project, it doesn't even rise to an exemption? Okay.
Um, through, through the chair, Commissioner Bradley, um, your last statement was the correct, um, it's sort of that sequencing is that if it, if it's determined to not be a project, then you don't get into the, any of the exemptions under SEQUIC itself, and so you, you don't go pass go.
Okay, so then when cases come forward under like a six-five-four-oh-two and they're combined with like a coastal development permit, then the CDP would have its own exemption and that covers the six-five-four-oh-two action at that time?
Uh, Commissioner through the chair, so the projects that are included here are still subject to SEQUIC individually. So this is just for our action of reviewing the Comprehensive Plan that the SEQUIC exemption is relevant to. So the projects themselves may have specific exemptions, but that'll be determined as the projects move forward.
Okay.
And, uh, just to add to that, Commissioner Bradley through the chair, um, the example you gave, and, you know, projects that would occur in the coastal zone, they're still subject to our coastal zoning ordinance would have to come through and, and get a coastal development permit, so that helps with our review and determination if projects have gone through to that step because they've either had, you know, some environmental review or with the issuance of that CDP, determination of consistency with the Comprehensive Plan and, and our, uh, Coastal Land Use Plan would have occurred with the issuance of that CDP.
Okay, and one last question. I know, yeah, you know, in this past year, we've had lots of things, well, not lots of things, probably under a dozen that are on a consent calendar, which I think is that are on a consent calendar, which I think is a great way to solve this. If you have a 65402 for land acquisition, you know, and it wasn't, I guess I'm wondering, why do we see those when they may have already been on the 65401? I'm thinking of a couple of cases where General Services bought a building in Isle of Jester for housing. And frankly, I don't know if it was on last year's 65401, but, so if it's a land acquisition and we see it as a 65402, that means it wasn't specifically included in a 65401 by description?
Commissioner through the chair, so what that means is that it wasn't included in this process. So, this is just one process that we have for reviewing county projects for conformity with both 65401 and 65402. If projects are not included in this or are not adequately prepared to have a conformity determination, an applicant can come through, or a department can come through individually with that project for a specific determination.
Last question, I'm sorry, I'm really digging deep here, but with all these housing element sites, and I know the Board has pressed hard to get county sites included in those, would that mean that next year, a lot of those cases might end up in a 65401 if the Board approves county projects or county rezone sites of county-owned land?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair, so, again, if it, if a project on a county site gets into the CIP, then it would be looked at as part of this process. For example, the Caeran Real Master Plan, county-owned site, there's, in the works, redeveloping a good portion of the existing buildings and new uses at that. So, they're going to be doing an environmental document for that master plan. And that was one of the determinations with this cycle for the CIP, that it wasn't ready to make that determination, because they're still going through the environmental review. So, potentially, if there is a county housing project that is part of the CIP, then that would be part of the overall conformity review for a future CIP cycle.
Okay, because I'm thinking of, like, dignity moves. And that was, it was on county-owned land, it was going to be a temporary housing site, and we had a, I think it was a consent item. It was a consent item for, does anybody remember? It was maybe a land acquisition or something like that. But it wasn't approving the whole development plan, but it was housing on a county-owned property. And I think it was a 65402, it must have been, otherwise, I'm not sure why we would have seen it, right?
It could have been, and, and, and just to add to Ms. Spring's description of when some projects may come directly to the Planning Commission, a lot of it has to deal with just the timing. Is that, particularly if it's right-of-way abandonment or, or real property transactions, often those are timely and need to move forward, and they're just not able, they're either not in the CIP itself, or they may have been in the CIP, but now there's opportunity to move forward, and so they would come directly to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Sorry for the drill there.
No problem. Commissioner Cooney, you?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. In terms of this process that we're seeing now and for the last couple of years I can remember, it's similar to this, but there was a time when the commission spent agonizing minutes trying to add projects that were considered important to, to the list. And, and it was a set number that, that could be considered. And so, it was like competition between districts. That isn't the case anymore, it could be brought up at any time, right? If, if the public or Commissioner or a member of the Board wants to have a project considered and go through this process, they could put it on an agenda at a subsequent time. Am I right about that?
Commissioner Cooney through the chair. So, traditionally, for the Capital Improvement Program, these projects that get on to the draft CIP are, are generated through, in different county departments. And so, they may be part of their operational plans, or with direction to move forward on certain projects from the CEO or the Board of Supervisors. And so, that's, I would say, the predominant pathway that projects get on to the CIP. Certainly, there could be recommendations from the Planning Commission and/or the Board to those departments to consider certain projects. And so, if they would be then developed in, in potential budgets and work programs for those projects could be added to a future CIP cycle. But it's slightly different, I'm not sure if, maybe you were also kind of overlapping with our annual work program, which has sort of more, what I believe, Commissioner Kearney, in terms of interest in moving forward with new projects, more planning projects. Certainly, that's part of our annual work program that often is before the Planning Commission for insight and, and to the Board as well.
And that tends to focus on the funding for projects, because in, in the end, if they aren't funded by the Board, they don't make it into reality. But they would still have to conform to the legal requirements when they're presented. Thank you.
Commissioners, Commissioner Park, Commissioner Reed, any comments?
I have a couple of questions. Okay, so, page eleven regards conformity with 65401, and there's twenty-three projects that conform. But then, when I move to the next page, on page twelve, it says, eleven projects require project-level review under 65402. Those eleven projects, are they from the, page eleven, twenty-three projects that conform? Or from the fifteen projects that are not adequately? In other words, even though you conform with 65401 as a project, it could be knocked out in one of these eleven projects on page twelve?
Chair Martinez, so, projects that make it through 65401 generally are a higher level of review. So, there may be some issue that was noted in a 65401 determination, that it was still approved, but there may be, like, some environmental potential impacts. And we, knowing that it's going through 65402, that's when we would catch and really look at those details. So, it's possible for a project to be found in conformity for 65401, but not have sufficient information for 65402. But those eleven projects are specifically projects from the overall list that have one of those triggers for 65402 determination of construction, of a structure, or abandonment of streets, or selling or purchasing property.
Okay. So, then, when, when I moved, when I, so the public knows is that, even though this word just says projects, we do have in hand the projects which we're approving and disapproving, so, so the public knows. The, the one that I, that came to my attention was the, the Santa Maria Valley World Region Project. And that's within my district, in District Four and Five, and that's the Santa Maria River Levy Trail. What I, what I couldn't understand when it says, currently, this project is not adequately prepared to move forward with no conformity determination, which determination are we talking about? Six, 65401 or 65402?
Chair, so, to, to, to be clear, so that the cell that you're looking at is conformity analysis for 65401. So, it's not adequately prepared to move forward with that determination? In the cell next to it, the Government Code 65402, this is just whether it triggers that review or not. So, in this case, because it doesn't include any of those project elements that trigger 65402, it's noted as having a no.
Okay. Thank you, those are my two questions, but that really helps me, thank you. Any other questions for the Commissioners? So, hearing all the, all the comments and the questions, is there any motion that the, and the Commissioners would like to make? Or do we even have that? Because this is a recommendation.
Before we get there, we just need to ask for public comment.
Any public comment? Okay, I remember that, it's going to be ingrained in my mind. Do we have any online, or?
I suspect that folks online are here for the next item, but just want to ask if anyone would like to speak on this item. Raise your virtual hand, and I'll call on you. I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay, and I'm not seeing any speaker, requests to speak, so I take it there's none in the audience, is that correct? And seeing nobody raising their hand in the audience. Now, I can move for a, an approval or disapproval of the staff draft foundation. Any comment, or any Commissioners ready to move? Silent.
Sorry, I'll move, as recommended by staff, to review and consider the CIP projects conformity with Government Code 65401 and 65402, to report that the County Planning Commission's conformity finding was made today, and report that to the Board of Supervisors, and to determine that the commission's review of the CIP is not a project pursuant to SEQUI. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chair, having heard from our policy wonk having to do with these matters, I'll second the motion.
Oh, right, I'll ask for a roll call then on this one.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
And Chair Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, so let's move on to the next matter, which is the Hidden Canyon Test Well Project Plan, Production Plan. Chief Lovett?
The following is a hearing on the request of West Bay Exploration Company to consider the following case number 22PPP1, and to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, case number 23NGD4, pursuant to the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQUI Guidelines.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt, and very briefly, to my right here, I'd like to introduce Mr. David Casares. He's the newest addition to County Council's office. He comes to us with a wealth of public law experience, most recently serving as the city attorney for the city of Simi Valley. We're very lucky to have him, and he'll be working on land use issues, and you'll see him here at the Planning Commission.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
This is the time I ask the Commissioners for any ex-party communications regarding this matter, which has now been called. Any ex-party communications to be disclosed? Commissioner Kearney?
At the risk of repeating myself at the right time, I did have a Zoom call meeting yesterday with the three residents of the Queyama Valley, Robbie Jaffe, Steve Gleisman, and Jeff Cooper. I'm not sure if Mr. Cooper actually resides, but he is associated with the Forest Watch Los Padres.
Yes, on Monday morning, I had the Zoom meeting with the same three folks that were described by Commissioner Cooney. And then, I guess this is within the boundaries of an ex-party communication site visit. Commissioner Reed and I took a little expedition to the Queyama Valley on Saturday, and did sort of a drive-by site visit of Schoolhouse Road. I'm very familiar with Schoolhouse Road, but we, we went by it, talked about it, and that stimulated my recollection of the site that's under consideration.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Park, for that. And, Mr. Reed?
Yes, I echo the trip we took to Queyama with Commissioner Park. Drove by Schoolhouse Road, spent the next several hours brushing out a trail for a proposed horse ride, which I think was his real objective for having me come by. Enjoyed it, though. I did have an additional telephonic conversation with Mr. Ed Hazard, who's president of National Association of Oil Royalty Owners California Division, and superficially discussed the project.
Okay.
Okay, and?
Commissioner Bradley?
Red is on, yeah. I had a conversation last, a Zoom call last Thursday with the same individuals that Commissioner Cooney cited, and the discussion was about the environmental review for the case and, and general lack of support. That was it.
Okay. Well, then, we'll move on to the report of our staff.
All right, good morning, Chair and members of the commission. My name's Katie Knoll. I'll be presenting the Hidden Canyon Test Well Production Plan on behalf of the Energy Minerals and Compliance Division. I also have Erin Briggs and John Zorovich. The project is located ten miles west of the town of New Queyama in the First Supervisorial District. The work area is approximately 0.85 miles south of Highway 166 and the North Fork Vineyard on Schoolhouse Canyon Road. The applicant, West Bay Exploration, is requesting approval of a production plan to drill a single oil and gas exploration well on an approximately one-acre pad. The well will have a target depth of about 11,000 feet below grade to reach the formation. The pad will be accessed by an existing dirt road. Once drilled, the test, and, once drilled and tested, the applicant will determine if future production is feasible. If it is, the applicant will return with a new production plan application with a detailed project description for the production phase, which would include pipelines, storage tanks, vessels, and any other equipment that might be needed. If drilling, if the drilling program is not successful, the well will be abandoned. Essentially, the production of the well is not included in the current project description, because the ability to produce is too speculative at this time. So, no oil or gas production is proposed as part of this project, and no permanent facilities are proposed besides the single wellhead following drilling operations. Staff prepared a mitigated negative declaration for the project. Based on public comments received, air quality, biological, and water resources are areas of concern. Air quality appears to be an issue of concern for members of the public who believe that the MND does not include details specifying the number and distance of truck trips or drilling emissions. However, these details are included in the project's air quality technical report, and the report's conclusions are represented in the MND. The project's cumulative GHG emissions are below the county's thresholds of 1,000 metric tons per year. Biological resources are also an issue of concern from the public comments, specifically questions about protocol surveys for special status species. The project biologists provided surveys from 2021, which were used in the MND, and have also provided in-season botanical surveys, as well as additional blunt-nosed leopard lizard surveys, both from 2022 and 2023, to demonstrate that the site has not changed. Water resources is another area of concern detailed in the public comments. Water will be acquired from an onsite well, and is estimated that a total of about 0.46 acre-feet of water will be used for drilling and dust control. Water associated with dust control is a standard county requirement. The project is consistent with the production plan standards outlined in the Land Use Development Code and the policies in the comprehensive plan as detailed in the staff report. Public comments pointed out that the project is listed under the Fifth Supervisorial District throughout the MND in the staff report. However, this is incorrect, the project is actually within the First Supervisorial District. Also, staff would like to correct the language listed under Condition of Approval Seven by O01 pre-construction surveys, and remove the following language: "A qualified botanist shall conduct botanical surveys during the appropriate flowering period for these species." This sentence can be removed, because botanical surveys were completed in 2022 and 2023 during the appropriate flowering season, and no special status species were found. Staff recommends that your commission make the required findings for approval of the proposed project as specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including the SEQUI findings, adopt the final mitigated negative declaration included in Attachment C, and approve the project subject to the conditions included in Attachment B and the revision to Condition of Approval Number Seven. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Knell, and does anybody have, any Commissioners have any comments or questions at this time of staff? I have one quick question in regards to this, this- I have one quick question in regards to this test drilling here. What's the disposal plan of any waste?
Chair Martinez, any waste that is produced would be trucked to likely the Santa Maria landfill.
Okay.
And that is included in the air quality technical report.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley?
Thank you, Ms. Knoll. That was a very good report and it was a great staff report. We talked a little bit about the number of plugged wells on the property and how many of them were test wells versus that have been used and abandoned after production. Did you ever get any more information about that because there's quite a few on the site? Maybe, I don't know, ninety-seven?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. There was nine, I believe, on the site, kind of distributed. It's a pretty large parcel, so they're pretty far away. I didn't get the exact information on if they were test or producing, but I could look at that right now.
It's just curious, and we, that was raised in public comment about, you know, the oil fields in Kiama maybe have done their life, and so why are we doing this again? So I don't know that it's worth it right now, but it might come up later.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, I just, you just stated that waste would be taken to the Santa Maria landfill. I believe I wrote, read, and it is in the project description that waste such as drilling mud and cuttings are going to be trucked to a disposal site in Bakersfield. It's on project description, five point three, one, two, second paragraph, last sentence.
Commissioner Reed through the chair. Usually, the disposal of waste, it isn't always known at the time of, you know, this process. The applicant did provide a general circum, radius of how far they could potentially take material. Bakersfield was originally discussed, and then in later discussions, Santa Maria was thrown out there. Being closer to project approval, the applicant has stated that Santa Maria is more appropriate.
Okay, I just wasn't aware that our city landfill in Santa Maria was generally receiving drilling mud and other downhole projects from wells being drilled.
Commissioner Park?
Yes, I have a couple, yeah, a couple of questions. One's a follow-up to Commissioner Reed's. There will also be produced water from this well, correct?
Correct.
Commissioner Park, that's correct.
Yeah, and there always is with wells. I remember Andy Caldwell once telling me that, you know, in oil drilling, you're really drilling for water and you hope to get some oil in it. And so there'll be some produced water just because you get down there. Where's it going to go? It's not going to the landfill, right?
Commissioner Park through the chair. I don't have that exact information. It's very likely that once materials, you know, produced, they're gonna mix it onsite and then add it or put it in some trucks to, for disposal. Could go to Bakersfield, could go to Santa Maria. That would be a better question for the applicant.
Good, thanks. Another, Paul, you mentioned, I believe your words, when you're talking about the biological assessment, that there was one in 2021, and then there were some follow-up, I believe your phrase was, in-season botanical reviews in 2022 and 2023? What was in-season? When were they?
Commissioner Park through the chair. So the original biological survey that was provided to the county during the application phase, it included a full range of surveys for any potentially significant special status species onsite. It was not prepared in March, which is the in-season or the blooming season for some of the potential species that could have been onsite. And so we used that for our initial review, and the biologist continued doing surveys in March, and I believe also May, to confirm the lack of any presence.
I'm going to switch from the minute to the big picture, and I do this realizing that we'll have kind of two opportunities for questioning staff. One's right now, obviously, and then one's after public comment. And we always, as planning commissioners, have to kind of consider which kinds of questions belong in which session. But I'm, I also think sometimes it's good to address the general ones because I know after, you know, some point soon, we'll have a great deal of public comment. And on everything that involves oil, we get two kinds of public comment generally. On one side, we're going to get folks that say, anything that you do relating to oil is going to add to climate change and you shouldn't approve it. And then we also will get folks that will say, well, anything that has anything to do with oil is good for jobs in the North County and you ought to approve it. And I've yet to learn after six or seven years of doing this, how any of that fits into our authority at the Planning Commission. So a question for you, or Mr. Briggs and Mr. Zorovich, who never will dodge my hard questions, I know that, that's why I like them so much, is do we really have authority here at the Planning Commission to address whether this project can lead to climate change and all the issues about whether we should still produce oil in California? I think that's a Mr. Briggs question. He's always ready to take those.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Park. Well, certainly the project is going to generate just under a thousand tons of GHGs associated with the oil drilling activities and transportation. So how that fits into climate change and, you know, climate change obviously is a cumulative issue. It's a global issue. It's not a local issue. So how that fits into the overall picture of climate change is really up to you, and where that discussion goes today at the commission, I'm very interested to see.
Very good. Okay, and we'll address that more later. Second question is, it looks from the correspondence we've received, most of which was one form letter that had the, it's the focus botanical review one, right? So I know that we're going to have a lot of comment because we already had it in letters about inadequacies of the MND. And so my question there is about, well, if some of us determine that the MND is inadequate, what do we do next? And the reason I want to address that now is I want the public, when they comment that it's inadequate, well, what do they think we should do otherwise? I mean, should we have a different MND? Should we have a different, should we have an EIR? Should we deny the project? So my question of staff is if planning commissioners determine that the MND is inadequate, what, what do we do next? Do we deny the project? We move for an EIR? Is there a revised MND procedure? Enlighten me, please.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I guess all the commissioners, maybe this goes to all of you. So yes, before you is an MND. And so if you have decided based on testimony today that you're uncomfortable with the analysis in the MND, you have several options. One is you can direct staff to, you know, further augment the analysis in the MND, and we can return. We can't really trail it today, but we could return on another hearing and provide the additional analysis that you want. If, on the other hand, you feel that an MND is not the appropriate analysis for this project, and you're indicating that either some type of fair argument or you would like additional analysis that would trigger an environmental impact report, you can ask staff to provide some additional analysis and what that EIR would look like. I think staff would want to know what your input and thoughts are. In that case, that, that direction could be appealed by the board on the, on the sequa analysis, and they could peel that and take that to the board, you know, that, then the board would determine that level. Did that answer your question? I don't know if I.
Well, then, one alternative you, I don't think you just addressed, was, so some folks are urging us to deny the project because of the inadequacy of the MND. Is that, is that an option, too? How does that fit in with the other two that you just described?
So typically, when a project, when a decision maker is relying on sequa analysis to, that they can't make, you know, support the project, it's usually that they can't make the statement of overriding considerations. So typically, when you have an MND, it's, if there's a policy decision that you are uncomfortable with, that the project is inconsistent with the policy, that would be probably your direction to go forward if you wanted to make a motion to deny the project. On the sequa analysis, if you feel there's more sequa needed, then we would be looking to see what that sequa is. And again, it could either augment the MND or direct staff to prepare an EIR.
My recollection is with the North Fork Frost Pond project, when I raised objections to the MND, this is several years ago, the next thing was that we asked for an EIR and didn't deny the project. We got an EIR and then went from there. Okay, well, thank you so much, and I'm sure we'll address this more later, but at least public knows what to comment on, I hope.
Mr. Chair, excuse me. It's County Council down here.
Yes.
Could I, could I interject, please?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Park, if I could just follow up on your, on your question. I want to clarify that the, the commission does have discretion with respect to sequa review and with respect to requests to deny the project. If the commission were looking to deny the project, it would be based on an inability to make the findings for approval of the project. And so that's where the commission should look, if that's where the discussion leads. With respect to climate change and sequa, I just wanted to clarify also that the sequa, the state's secret guidelines do specifically identify climate change as a cumulative impact and direct local agencies to consider that through the GHG emissions analysis.
Well, and can that cumulative impact be, well, this exploratory well, if it finds something, and if the, if someone arranges to produce it, and if somebody goes through the permitting process and they're successful and actually start producing sometime in the future, that that will add to the supply of oil in the world and that that will lead to climate change? Is that within the cumulative change provisions of, of sequa?
So the guidelines do set forth procedures for analysis, but I think, as staff indicated, the project before you is a test well, and the sequa is for the test well. For production, that's a separate permit with separate sequa action. So if there's an impact to GHG regarding production, that'd be analyzed under a different permit and associated sequel with that. So the item before you today is just to do a test well. And up to the point that they do the testing and then they decide a production or non-production, that's as far as the action is today in the analysis.
Chair Martinez, I just remembered that I did have a much more granular question about the location of the site and so forth, but I know, noticed that there are other lights that are lit. And so I'd like to ask that question. I'm not sure I should ask it before all the other commissioners get to ask their follow-ups.
Well, I think you should ask your question because obviously your questions are spurring more questions, so.
Okay, well, maybe this one will bore them so much, they'll decide, they'll forget their other questions.
Well, I think the policy.
But, Ms. Knoll, do you have a, an aerial that shows us exactly where this site is? And I'm asking that because I think I remember this site very, very well, and I'll get into that later. But I also wonder why this particular site was selected. I'm, I'm kind of speculating. It's because it's not in the, in the vineyard, you know, it's outside the vineyard and it's on a flat spot, and I think I remember it pretty well. It'd be a good site for it, but, you know, when, if members of the public want to comment on, was there appropriate review of alternate sites and so forth, it's, this is relevant. So can you show us anything that shows exactly where it is?
Commissioner Park through the chair. This is probably the most clear aerial we have. I'll just go back really quick. Again, this is Highway one sixty-six, New Kuyama's over here. You're familiar with the vineyard, which is at the, you know, front of the parcel. So you drive along Schoolhouse Road, and then it's this red section, and I'll just blow it up. Here is the pad, and again, here is Schoolhouse Canyon Road. The pad, like you said, is extremely flat. The general area is pretty barren aside from these random shrubs.
Okay, I, I don't know if you know the answer, but it'll, it'll be good to hear from somebody, maybe the applicant, why they chose this particular site. I'm, I'm speculating that, why, but somebody should address that. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this broad issue that has been raised by Commissioner Park is what's been eating at me about separation of the drilling process from the ultimate project, which may or may not happen. And I'm interested in why we might be foreclosed from considering the environmental impacts of a successful well simply because it might not be successful. Is that something we're bound by? I realize from the driller's standpoint, they don't want to put a lot more money into the potential environmental impact of what could be a very productive well, and which is acknowledged that would have different and maybe more severe environmental impacts than just the drilling of the well. So I need to know, why are we required to separate these two processes? And I'm not sure we have, we have the best people in the county to ponder these issues, and we have over the years in the Kiama Valley and elsewhere. So I'm really focusing more on the experience of our supervising staff as to why we cannot in this process insist on an environmental analysis of the ultimate project in terms of truck traffic, for example, something we've dealt with at great length. By picking apart this drilling process, it really distorts the environmental impact of the project, in my view.
Chair and Commissioner Cooney, and then all that staff, they want to weigh in. So I'm going to repeat what I said earlier. On the, on this project before you, the project description, there's a hard stop at the end of testing, so they can't go further. So the discretionary action before you today is up to testing. Anything beyond that is now speculative because we don't know, and we're not granting a discretion to go further than that. So that's the staff's position is the item before you is bound by the discretionary action or approval or entitlement that may or may not be given. So if they wanted to move forward to production, we don't have that information or that evidence to say what would those impacts be. It's all speculative. So the action today, if it is granted, would be a hard stop at the end of testing. Any further action beyond that would require further discretionary action and additional sequa. And I'll look to John, our Deputy Director, Zorovich, if he wants to add to that.
I don't really have much more to explain, and I think Mr. Wilson did. And again, I think part of it, too, is just the project description. The description talks about a test well, exploratory test well. There are no provisions for transportation, storage of oil, processing of any of the oil that is, that would be produced by this site. So it really, the, the project description and the way our ordinance lends itself is really kind of, as Jeff said, a hard stop here. Going further, it could be speculative. It could just be a chance that this well could, they could not find oil, and the project would then be completed once they have abandoned the well. So we just don't have the additional information to pursue additional sequa. And I, I think it feels awkward because normally we're used to kind of evaluating the impacts through the life of the project. But in this instance, the ordinance allows for, this is the project today, and if they find oil, then we can move on and analyze what, what the next step is.
Mr. Zorovich, I. Mr. Zorovich, I appreciate that there is a restriction in, in what you just gave as an explanation on being able to go beyond the project description. And you're saying that comes from the county ordinance, one of the county ordinances or, or our, our basic rules as to how we analyze projects. But I think that's very important to indicate because otherwise, we have the ability, I think, to, to at least hear from the public and, and ourselves, study the matter, and be concerned about the ultimate potential of a very deep well, which, which, you know, maybe it's of interest to the oil drilling public to find out how much oil is down there. Maybe it's even the way we should do all projects, you know? Basically, instead of analyzing a new building, we just look at the driveway to the building and say, okay, we're going to have a hard stop after we look at whether the driveway impacts passing traffic. We've never really done that as a general matter. We've, we've expanded our observation of projects to see if we can identify any environmental impacts before the projects are started. So if you're saying, and I think you are, we're bound by our own ordinance to stop and not go beyond this project, so be it, you know? We can, we can decide on the narrow basis. But I think we're missing the boat here on what sequo is really trying to get at. And it's, it's a little bit deeper than just saying, the project is X. We're only going to look at the impacts of X. And some of those are the same impacts that would be recreated if a, a well is filled in and starts drilling. But thank you for staying with me on that issue.
I, I appreciate the, the responses and comments back and the conversation. You know, again, if this, I was, I'm going to just say, if this well is successful, it's an if. We have no idea today. If it is, we will be back before you today at another point, and you will now be looking at and evaluating the impacts of this well or more than one well producing in this area. And so I think the analysis that you're wanting to like, look further on, I'm not, we're not saying it's not going to be provided. You, you will have, you will have it. We, we are required to come back to you with further analysis. It's just at this point, it's, it's only exploratory. And to evaluate those impacts when they're so speculative in nature at this time, I think what I'm trying to say is would be premature because we need to return to you. If, using your example, and again, this is just a conversation, a building with a driveway, if it was just a driveway and that's all we allowed, that's what the impacts would be. But normally when we do a driveway, we do a building, we do, how many people are going to be living in it and all, whatever. And so we expand further. In this regard, it's just more limited, which I, I understand. It's frustrating because that's not what we're really taught to do in, in planning. We look beyond that. But this is just breaking a project down into a small sequence. And if it's, if it's successful for the operator, then we are required to look more and provide you with the more information that I think you're more, you're used to seeing.
And to continue to, Chair, and to continue to torch ourselves with this line of thought. I, I think to restate where, where we're talking about, and I understand, I think I'm trying to respond to Commissioner Cooney's question. When we look in the future, really what we're talking about is that the project is unknown. We don't know what the future project is, as far as like, what would happen beyond testing? How many trucks? What the production amount would be? All that stuff. So that is what I meant when I was saying it's speculative. The project description is speculative beyond testing. So that's what I was trying to articulate before, as far as we wouldn't know what to analyze on a sequo thing because we don't know what that project would be beyond testing.
That'd be the last thing I'd say at this time, and it's, it's important because it's such a concern in our county and in the Cuyama Valley specifically to recognize that despite our desire to bring in impacts that we know from other drilling projects are likely to be there, transportation being high on the list, we're not going to look at it now. We're going to look at the number of trucks that are involved in the drilling process. And we're going to put blinders around everything else. And, and even though they're very well related, we could actually be driven by our ordinance to approve the ability to drill this well when in fact, it's just the first step in a series of what we know to be very impactful environmental concerns. So that's it. I'll, I'll say more if we get to the end of the day.
Commissioner Bradley?
Maybe. Staff has some sense of how frequently this bifurcation of a project, like test well and then later production plan, has been deployed by the county. If it's in the ordinance, we understand that that's presumed. And I think it's presumed for this industry because this industry is unlike, you know, a subdivision or a building. So if you have a sense of that, that might help me. The second thing is, we heard that there were updated biological surveys, and I guess I'm not finding them in the MND. You said 22 and 23. I saw the letter on the bull-nosed, the creature, but not the plant. So I'm not sure where, you said 21 and, you know, 23 were done in May and March. And so where, did that get in the document or where is that?
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Bradley, I'm going to address your first question, and then Ms. Knoll is going to address your second question. Regarding your question about how frequently do we see these exploratory programs? I've been in the division since 2013 and we've never done one. This is the first one that I've seen. And I am not aware of any exploratory permit granted by the county. This may be the first one that we've ever done. So it's, it's unusual. One of the reasons why we're seeing this is that this site is not located within the Russell Ranch or Cuyama oilfield boundary. This is outside the oilfield boundaries. So that gives us a little bit more uncertainty as to whether or not they are going to hit the target reservoir. And, you know, as you pointed out, the ordinance does provide for the ability to do this because of the nature of the industry. And it is that uncertainty is likely the main reason why this section of the ordinance was created, was to create a pathway to allow drillers to explore without having to create an entire production program, not even knowing if they're going to hit the reservoir or not. So a little bit more context there, and then Ms. Knoll can address your bio question.
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. So the, like I said earlier, the application included the, the surveys from 2021, and that is what we used in the MND. So the later surveys, 22 and 23, are not present in the MND. And originally, we did include a condition that said, you know, please provide in-season surveys. And then what we found is the applicant actually had been performing these, these in-season surveys and did provide it to us. So staff does have that information, but it is not listed in the MND at this time. That is something that we would include later on, after the fact, if, you know, this project is approved.
Okay, thank you, because that's the focus of a lot of the public comment. So I don't know if there's a way to share that quicker than, or, you know, we see what happens today. But if that was available for the public, that might have addressed some of the concerns. I, I don't know. Anyway, thank you for explaining that. I appreciate it.
Sure. And really quickly, I realized I didn't comment on one of your questions. We have both botanical in-season surveys for 22 and 23, as well as the blunt-nosed leopard lizard protocol surveys for 22, 23. So, and we have information on Kitfox. So we do have this information that the public is, is discussing, and we, we can make that available however we find it best.
I think I saw the blunt-nosed lizard letter update, but that's why I was wondering if I missed the botanical ones. Okay. All right. Enough said. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Reed?
Yes, I had a, well, a couple of questions or observations which were sparked by Commissioner Park's questions. First, with respect to produced water. Yes, oil is associated, since it came from marine deposits, it's all, it's associated with brine, heavy brine material, water with lots of particulates. But since this is in a production well, and there's no pump in the bottom of the hole, there's not going to be any produced water as commonly referred to. What this well is going to do, and, and if you get that deep, it's not as if the, the oil and the brine is in a pool, it's in tiny pores in rock. So I imagine what the product of this well is going to be are core samples that they're going to analyze to see if they're in the right in producing strata. But any, in addition, any liquid components, even from the, from the drinking water aquifer as the drill progresses through it, are going to be drawn up and wind up being a component of the drilling mud as it removes, is removed from the hole. So I wouldn't anticipate any liquid water, brine, anything of that nature being produced. Secondly, you had some questions about the seasonality of the plant ID, which is mainly, has been done during the flowering season because the taxonomic identification and characterization of flowering plant species is based on floral characters. While external morphologic features like leaf description, margins, colors, distribution on the stems are part of it, you have to have the flower to get it down to species. Hence, the necessity of conducting those botanical surveys at the proper season. And I think it was pretty clear from looking at the survey methods for the blunt-nosed leopard lizard, they have to go to the reference site on the Carissa Plain to make sure they're out and active in order to validate any negative findings they might make on-site. So the, the defense couldn't be, well, that was inaccurate just because it was done during the hibernation season or whatever. So with respect to those. Now finally, are we going to have a representative available for questioning from West Bay?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. Yes, we do have, the applicant has a team. I believe, you know, we have at least one in person, and we have a couple more on Zoom. So to answer your question, yes.
Good, because I have some questions as to whether, you know, this well site was selected based on a seismic or geologic survey. I think it was probably not like the Wild Hatters used to do it, where the horse got tired, they stopped the wagon and said, here, I think that. And, and I'd also have some questions relative to wellmore construction. It appears they're going to use all the standard safety practices, like blowout preventer in the event they encounter the deposit with high reservoir pressure. Looks like they're using multiple casing layers and cementing off through the, all the potable drinking water aquifers. But I'd like to have that come out and be confirmed again during this hearing, that that hole, dry or not, is going to meet all of the proper modern construction standards. So at the time this process is concluded, it's either capped off as non-productive, but capped off in accordance with modern standards where the public can be assured that it's not become a future problem. And, and also it's properly constructed in the possibility that ultimately it would become a producing well. Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Park, back. Okay.
Yeah, this is a follow-up, questions from, rather comments by most commissioners, both Commissioners Bradley and Commissioner Reed. And this is getting back to the plants. I, I was excited to hear that there were in-season follow-up surveys. And, and so I, I just leafed through the, what we have in the record again. And, and that's what my question is going to get at, is what's in the record? That's very important for us because that's what we're supposed to make decisions from. As planning commissioners, unlike Superior Court judges, we're allowed to bring our own experiences in and recite them and put them in the record. But the public relies on, on what they get to see. So all these people are going to get up and talk will rely on what they get to see. And what I see in the biological constraints analysis, at, at page nine at the bottom is a sentence, "No special status plant species were observed on the property. While it may be unlikely that many of these species do not occur at the site location." I don't actually understand that double negative. "Due to the past grazing disturbances occurring on this property, a focused botanical survey must be conducted during the normal blooming period for these species to determine presence, absence." And so then I'm looking in the record for when did those follow-up surveys occur. And, and just like Commissioner Bradley commented, I see a, a letter dated December 3, 2021 to, to Mr. Briggs from Ben Ruiz, the consultant. And it's describing in great detail, protocol surveys, 17 of them, for the blunt-nosed leopard lizard. And I actually read them all, and none of them refer to surveying the, the vegetation. And I know with this, especially the Blakely's spine flower, I'm missing some, some syllable there. It's 15 centi, I mean, millimeters high. It's, it's a half inch high. And so you don't just kind of casually look for it. It's a belly botany. So I'm, I'm still looking for where is there something in the public record, okay, that the members of the public can comment on that talks about an in-season survey of the botany on-site? If there is, I'd like to know where it is, and they should know where it is.
Commissioner Park through the chair. County, planning staff has those documents. They were provided too late to include within the public record. But again, we can include that in the revised MND.
And if you'd like, we can distribute those now. Up to you.
Commissioner Park, opening?
No further questions.
Well, I think the question from staff is, is if we would like those to distribute it to us now or, or later. And I'd just like to hear from the commissioners, since that offer was made by staff, if they want it now or not at all.
Commissioner Reed?
Uh, I'll take it now.
Okay. Chair, Chair and Commissioners, if you want those records now, I recommend we take a break.
Well, yeah.
We'll have to publish, not publish them, print them, put them online, distribute them. So we can do that, but now's probably a good time for break before applicant.
Quick question. How voluminous is this document we're talking about?
Chair Martinez, there are four separate surveys, each about six-ish pages. They're pretty straightforward. Each, there's a 22, 23 for both the blunt-nosed leopard lizard and the in-season surveys.
Okay. And then I, I think, I think that'd be a good idea since it has been requested by at least one commissioner right now. So why don't we take a, how long is it going to take to produce these documents? About 15, 20 minutes? Half hour?
Chair, Chair, let's go 20. And the, the reason why I say 20 is we, we need to print them, but I still want to be able to provide time for the commissioners to review them.
Sure.
So let's go 20.
Yeah, let's go 20. And I think, and, and just so the public knows what I'm thinking here as relation to this, is that if we get these documents, the applicant is going to have an opportunity to address the commissioners, and the commissioners will then have these documents in possession to ask questions of the applicant during this process. Because it, it is a concern to some of the commissioners. So why don't we just do that?
I, 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 I want to tell you, I'm going to have a question for Ms. Richardson. Okay? And you can answer it when we come back. But I'm, I'm concerned about a propriety of a public hearing where an important, literally a crucial document is only produced during the hearing, and the public has no opportunity to review it and comment on it. And, I mean, somehow, maybe you can disseminate it to everybody who's sent a letter in and is ready to, to comment, but it's, there's certainly a question of fairness. I'm, I'm sure members of the public, when they comment, will, will address that more vehemently than I do. But it, it, it ought to be something that we have County Council weigh in on before we embark upon the rest of the hearing. Thank you.
Excellent.
Chair Martinez, Commissioner Park. So that's part of the reason we'll take a break to post it online, and so it's available to the public. But, you know, your commission has discretion. If you'd like more time to review it, to continue the hearing or trail a hearing, or, I'm not sure. the hearing, or I'm not sure when public comment will start. It might be after a lunch break because we still need applicant presentation. So there's some additional time.
All right. So let's take our break right now. And we'll be back at 11:05. Thank you.
Okay, welcome back to the planning commission. And I take it then, I just wanted to confirm on the record though, that we commissioners have received the reports as indicated before we took our break. And I personally have had an opportunity to review them and I'm not sure if the other commissioners have. And I just wanted to confirm that it has been posted.
Mr. Chair, yes, so there are hard copies in the back of the room in addition to the copies on the dais and then I have also placed copies online.
Okay, thank you. And Chair staff wants to have some information as far as when we receive those.
Great, if I could have that.
Chair members of the commission, we received the two blunt nose leopard lizard reports as well as the two botanical survey reports. As well as kit fox memo last night at eight P M, which is why you're only receiving this now.
And I believe Commissioner Reed, you pointed out to me earlier that some of these reports were available or at least identified.
It seemed like I recall reading some of the report sheets somewhere else prior, but not with the developmental. The background, probably online someplace or in here, but I recall looking at the specific leopard lizard survey reports. It might have been one of the links available here.
Commissioner Reed, if I may, the there are two, there's a blunt nose leopard lizard report and botanical survey in the M N D. Those are prepared in twenty twenty one, so they might look similar, yeah.
Okay, and Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff with these documents in hand? Or should we just move on to the applicant? Well, I don't see anything from the Commissioner, so let's move on to the applicant and I see no presentation from the applicant, but this is your time. To present to us, you're hearing some questions from the Commissioners and I'm sure you're not new at this, but. I'd welcome your timing here to spend your time in providing as much information as you can. And I'm going to limit this to no more than fifteen minutes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, my name is Tim Baker. Can you hear me okay?
Correct, I can hear you. You know what, when I said fifteen minutes, I should have mentioned and clarified that, you know, we're going to hear from general, the general public. You will have an opportunity to refer or address the general comments that we hear from the general public and as well as staff and any questions afterwards. And I'm going to try and limit that back into about five minutes if it comes down to that, but this is your time. Thank you.
Okay, we'll try to be as succinct as possible. I took notes in the previous discussion and I'll try to capture as much as I can. Basically, with respect to elements of planning, I would like to respond by saying that geologic reservoirs vary. And the fluid captured vary as well from place to place. Our geoscientists conducted detailed studies, the only way to truly answer the question as to whether it's productive or not is to drill a well and analyze the information gleaned. From the well, most wells of this nature, you've sometimes heard the term as wildcat wells. And most of them aren't successful. We're not sure that this is going to be successful, but that is why we didn't. Detail at this point, a plan that would show production, the information that we glean from the drilling of wells. Will give us an idea of pressure hydrocarbon type if it's there. And from that, we'll be able to design equipment, but the range and equipment applications vary a great deal. As additional note, I guess I'd like to say that our company is very concerned with the greenhouse gas issue. We're pioneering equipment procedures here in Michigan, a couple of devices are being patented. And we are embracing all forms of energy. We support renewable energy. We think the best approach is to consider considering the existing energy framework. Is to and to provide a more sustainable transition is to work and to develop reasonably all forms of energy. We can't simply transition to renewables overnight. We feel like we could, if we're successful here, we can design a facility that will address our greenhouse gas concerns as well. So we look forward to the hopes of doing that. Relative to site selection, this site was selected based on seismic and geologic studies. There have been nine wells drilled in the area, they are some distance away. We engaged a local engineering firm Santa Barbara has experience with. And they have examined the wells in detail. Or formulation of plan as to how this will well be drilled safely and efficiently. So we would welcome interaction with them and of course people provide daily reports on how the well is pressing if we're successful in getting a permit to drill it. I took the question from one of the Commissioners about cementing of the underground sources of fresh water. We will be cementing those to surface and then we will be running a log that will evaluate bond, make sure our absolutely sure there is integrity. Between the casing and the freshwater zone. You had a question about the well control stack, we call it well control stack, not a blow up burner, but I guess for practical purposes, that is. I think what the convention is in the industry, but we've designed this well so that we won't have positive flows to surface and we'll address that with mud additives in the drilling. Let me see if there are any other questions. We don't know if this well will produce brine or not. If it does produce brine, obviously brine doesn't provide any value. That brine will be taken to a class two approved state and federal approved disposal well. With that, I think I covered most of the questions, but I would have any other, if you have any other additional questions, I'm happy to answer.
There's one thing that I did forget to do and I just need you to identify yourself and for the record, my name.
For the record, my name is Tim Baker.
Okay.
I work with for West. Go ahead.
Your position with West is what now?
I'm project manager on this project. I've been with West Bay Exploration and more or less in this capacity for about thirty years.
Thank you, thank you. I don't know how and up to the podium is.
Representative of West Bay, actually, sorry, my name's Ben Reese, I'm one of the other representatives of West Bay Exploration and I'm actually the owner of B P R Consulting. I have fifteen years of experience as a senior biologist. I am, most of my experience is in botanical with a lot of floristics, animal species and just lots of biology, so I have a lot of background in this. Some of the questions that were asked about the how and why it wasn't done in the blooming period and the reason that was written in there, just to be to be clear is. In animal species, C D F W and Fish and Wildlife Service have designed a protocol survey. So in those protocols, they give you dates, they say we want you to start April fifteenth and end at these dates and these dates have changed throughout the time. As studies have been done by experts saying these animal species can be up, they can be down, there's optimal times and then we don't want to do it during juvenile season. Same with kangaroo rats, there's an optimal time, there's cold, there's different periods. So that's why blunt nose, those dates are set in stone. When it comes to botanical, that's different. So botanical right now, as we speak, as you guys know, in the in the valley Kern County and Kuyama and we're seeing throughout our state of abnormally warm temperatures right now. So we actually even have crews doing botanical surveys now because they are they are blooming. Now we will write in a report that we didn't do it during blooming period because those blooming periods, if we didn't do them now. It our clients wouldn't be able to proceed with their project because by the time it would be blooming periods, the word we would use is it would be the ground would be burned, it would be nuked, it would be. The plants would be dead at this time. So that's why that's integrated into that report because it's it's an honest or honest opinion. It wasn't during the time, but it was during the time they were blooming during that year. Blooming periods have changed dramatically, nesting birds have changed dramatically. We're seeing it out throughout the corridor, we're seeing your cormorants on Summerland nesting later and not earlier like they have. So each of these protocols are being looked at and biologists are doing things and being more assertive than than they used to be. So when you see that that verbiage, it's because that's the reason. Now these other, it was our understanding, but we continue to do these surveys through January twenty two and twenty three and actually into twenty four will start. Because when we were asked through the county to do these, we we supplied these late because we didn't know that it was going to be an issue, so we made sure we had them on hand. Also with San Joaquin Kid Fox, same thing, those were another questions that people had brought up. And San Joaquin Kid Fox haven't been in some of these corridors sometimes, so when we ever have the opportunity to set camera traps like we do to verify these things. Especially on a project like this, we do extensive research to make sure that the animals aren't going to be harmed in any way. And to piggyback on something Tim said during his process of how they chose this well site, not only was it seismic, but one of the most important things with West Bay. Is being a good steward of the land and they had us come and look out at the project where their where their potential wells were going to be. And we picked this spot because on Google Earth, if you really hone in on Google Earth, this area was at some point in time in ag or heavily used for something else beyond. What it is and so if you look at that map, Katie, if there's one way you guys could pull it up, you'll see the vineyard and then you'll see the 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 actual process that it looks and you'll see all those are juniper shrubs. Lot of west red stem fillery is in this area, but not only is it flat, it's nothing's been able to grow back there because of whatever uses years ago in the past there. So it could have been heavily in ag, it could have been, there's multiple reasons for that. So that's why this site was chosen because number one, it's lack of burrows, it's lack of animals, it's it's lack of any kind of species that could harm our environment any more than it already is. So that's why these are done that way. So I just wanted to make sure we had some clarity on on all of these questions and and things to be able to be brought to the attention of of the committee. And that's why it was written the way it was. So. Thank you for your for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. And any questions, anybody else? Is there anyone else from from West Bay? There's you and there was the gentleman, Tim, I believe, who was appearing.
Tim Baker, yes.
Tim Baker. That's it for the applicant, correct?
What was that?
You are the two representatives from the applicant.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So now now's the time, an opportunity for the Commissioners to ask any questions of you, the applicant, and then it's both you and Mr. Bell. Please, Mr. Park.
Mr. Ruiz, I thought your comments were very interesting about timing and I'd love to spend a day out with you in a pickup wandering around, so let's do that sometime. But on this in particular, so the first survey botanical was February twenty twenty one, which I remember as a severe drought year. Okay, and so are you telling me things were blooming in September, I mean, excuse me, February twenty twenty one? I'm skeptical.
Then cruise out to do that. Normally that blooming period we would have started in March, hence why we did it earlier. So in that time, because of how the these planes work in the Kuyama Valley, so you'll always see them come later than the San Joaquin Valley. A lot of times San Joaquin Valley will will different precip times, it'll stay cooler in the Kuyama Valley that it will later. So a lot of the Kern mallow that you see that will come up during their flowering time, depending on their pistilids and what happens in that time, all that stuff varies. So we really take into account for that. And when we look into the reference sites, which extensive reference sites are done constantly throughout different periods. Because things can be up in Fresno and not in Bakersfield, things can be up in Bakersfield and not in the Kuyama Valley, things can be up in Santa Maria and not in the Kuyama Valley. So at that time, during that February time, we felt that that was the most optimal time. But as you see later, even in the ones we've given you, we try to stagger those dates out to verify those times and it isn't our best. How we how we feel that we did it and during the right time and that's what we do as an unbiased opinion.
Now the spine flower is known for not even appearing at all in really dry years, is that right? As as with many annuals, you just don't see them.
Yeah, it 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 can, but 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 when we do those surveys during those times, we because it's such a small flower and there's different things and so is Kern mallow is very small. Traditional true Kern mallow, there's a lot of hybrids, but traditionally they're really tiny and really hard to see. So that's why we do that. And also our teams that are doing blunt nose surveys are also botanists and and as they're doing those surveys, we're constantly picking up on things. Picking about bird species because as we do blunt nose, it's during nesting bird season. So we don't know if we could come across Swainson hawk, which known or in the area, whatever nesting areas and then we can advise in our clients during that time like, hey, this. If you do have nesting birds, we would say, hey, you want to, let's do this drilling outside of nesting season because we want to affect the nesting bird time. So there's that's how the reasoning and why we do what we do.
Okay, I I'll come out later. I've actually had the opportunity to go through that that very site about a hundred times on horseback, so I'm.
Yeah, if you've been to that site, it's a unique site. in the field with my teams and the reality is in a site like this, if you go two hundred yards away from the square, it, it, there's viable habitat. This area just does not hold viable habitat anymore. And a lot of time, these are due to extremely heavy grazing, could have been big fires. I, I'm not the guest of history. I could look back on Google Earth and we could go through that whole tangent, but the, the ground speaks for itself, just like animals speak for themselves. There's a reason they're not there because it's not comfortable for them to be there. Or they would be, it would be littered there with, with burrows and, and everything. And we would have wrote about that. So.
So I've got another question and I got to ask it. It's a, it's a little disturbing to me to spend the time I did reviewing all this material and reviewing all these letters from the public and knowing they're all prepared. And, and here's something that was really important that was left out. And I can't vilify staff for that because they tell me that they got these additional botanical surveys from twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three last night. Okay. Why is it that you, you gave these to staff only last night?
Well, in, in how we understand it is when we gave them the first survey report, that was all that was required to, for what they needed. We continue our due diligence continually till we see a project to fruition. We didn't know at the time until it was brought up in those comments that that's what was needed. But as soon as it was needed, we supplied it. We can, we, so how I understand how this works is when we give you the information that they start with, that it, that's what we give. And we were told later that we would continue to do in, in a measures, continue to do surveys. So we continue to do surveys. But the information that, that I can take responsibility for that if, but if I, I don't really know what to say at, on that point, but we did give the information and that's the reason why we would have given it earlier also.
Okay. Well, you, you said what you have to say. Okay. Thanks a lot, Mr. Ruiz.
Thank you.
Let's do that pickup trip sometime.
I love that.
All righty.
Any other commissioners? No, seeing none. Okay, thank you. And so this is the. Okay, we'll go to the general public comments.
Sure. We just have one.
Do we have to address the?
Yeah, let's take care of that now in case the commission decides not to include it. Mr. Kuiper can verbally testify in his, his comments. So the letter in question is this letter here. There was a updated version. So my understa, the representation made was that the, so this letter should look familiar to you. It was previously distributed to the commission, is that the contents of the letter are, remain the same, but that the list of organizations supporting the letter at the top have been added to. And so because this is a letter, it's technically over one page in length. In order to incorporate the revised letter, we would need a fourth, fifth vote from the commission. If the commission opted not to incorporate it into the record, Mr. Kuiper could incorporate it verbally into his comments, which is why I want to address this now.
Okay. So first I want to confirm or affirm with all the commissioners that you do have this letter in front of you. Okay, seeing that everybody's nodding their heads, yes. And so let me hear the comments from the commissioners as whether we will consider this as part of our review or not. Commissioner Reed?
Well, I normally feel very strongly that after the cutoff of time for submittal, we should not accept any additional printed materials or letters. But since I actually asked to have these latter submissions of the biological reports accepted, I will relent and just say that my normal objections I will keep to myself.
Any, any other? Commissioner Cooney?
I think there's another factor here. We did have the substance of the letter to look at and did look at it. All that changed as a result of this being submitted today is the, the listing of the organizations. And while that's important, I, I don't think it's sufficient to deny it being admitted to the record.
Okay, so let me just, let me just hear from all, I'll just say, are all in favor of accepting this letter and submission? Or do we have to do a roll call?
We just have, we need a motion in a second.
Okay. So do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we accept the letter dated January twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, submitted today into our record of today.
Have a second?
I'll second that. And I also appreciate the fact that in this version, you spelled the last name of my friend Ken Huff correctly. Yeah, it was Hugh in the earlier version. So I second this.
Okay. So then we do a roll.
Sure.
Yep, I know. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Park?
No.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Chair Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, so now we can move on to the general public comments.
Uh, yes. And so not to make things overly complicated, but we did receive a request from a group of speakers to go through them in specific order. I did go over this with the chair and he has agreed to allow this. So we're going to start with that and then we'll go to the other speakers either and sort it up to the chair, whether you want to take those in the room first or on Zoom. This list of people is a mix of the both. So where we're going to start off with is I'll just go down the list and then we'll go, I'll start calling on people. Roberta Jaffee who's online, Ben Pitterly, Steve Gleisman, Catherine Anderson and Mark Chitello. And so let me see, Ms. Jaffee is online.
Okay, so just for the general public and for those who are present, how many speakers we have altogether?
So there's five on this list. We have nine total online and then however many you have there.
Okay. So the maximum allowed time is three minutes and we'll be keeping track of that. Thank you. So please be aware of that.
I'm Ms. Jaffee, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Chair Martinez and Commissioners. I'm Roberta Jaffee, a farmer and thirty-year resident in the Cuyama, in the, in the Western Cuyama Basin, a few miles southwest of the proposed drilling site. I have been involved with the development of the Cuyama Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan under Sigma and serve on the Standing Advisory Committee to the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. I ask you to consider this permit in the same context you've considered other Cuyama issues that have come before you that protect Cuyama's groundwater supply and prioritize safety on Highway one sixty-six. The Cuyama Valley is the only critical overdrafted basin in Santa Barbara County and one of twenty-one identified as such in California. We have no other source of water other than groundwater to rely on. Thus, thus the impacts of this eleven-thousand-foot well on our groundwater supply are important to examine in detail. A lot of water is required to drill a deep oil well. Yet there is no discussion in the MND as to how much water will be needed to drill this well. Where will this water come from? There are conflicting reports as to where the water for the site preparation and the well drilling will be sourced. In the staff report, section five point one states the water will come from a private well on site. In the MND, page forty-nine states that the water will be trucked in. The source of the water needs to be identified. If some of it is to come from a well on site, then the impact of this on an already declining groundwater table in this specific region needs to be disclosed. If some of it is to be trucked in, then the amount and source of this water needs to be identified and the number of trucks per day also needs to be disclosed. All of this is missing in the current information. The drilling mud will contain toxic heavy metals. Our research shows this will be the deepest well drilled in the Cuyama Valley. Drilling up ancient waters will produce heavy metal constituents such as harsnack. There are no specifics of what will be done to protect the groundwater of nearby agricultural fields and runoff into the Cuyama River, including some of the last groundwater dependent ecosystems in the Cuyama Valley. There is also limited description of how contaminated mud will be contained onsite and transported offsite. The commission has considered the current level of traffic and the hazardous conditions of Highway one sixty-six, a rural two-lane highway running east-west through the Cuyama Valley that everyone depends on. Page forty-four of the MND refers to only one truck load being transported per day and refers to the drilling mud as non-hazardous waste. How is the mud waste determined to be non-hazardous when it will most likely contain heavy metals? And will traffic be limited really to only one truck per day? Please deny this permit application in both the context of the critically overdrafted Cuyama Valley, our complete dependence on groundwater, and on the hazardous safety conditions of Highway one sixty-six. If you determine to move forward, please require an EIR to respond to the many unanswered secret questions presented by myself and others. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Pitterly?
Pitterly, is this on? Good morning. I'm Ben Pitterly, representing Los Piteras Forest Watch. We're a nonprofit environmental organization. We work to protect the Los Piteras National Forest, the Crezo Plain National Monument, and we have a history of involvement in the Cuyama Valley. First, I guess on behalf of Mr. Ken Huff, thank you for accepting the new, the revised letter with the correct spelling of his name into the record. We just wanted you to know that the additional organizations, Santa Barbara Botanic Garden, Channel Islands Restoration, Quail Springs Permaculture, and the Standing Rock Coalition wanted to join the letter. The content is exactly the same, so thank you. You know, I had, I had several things prepared to say about the botanic surveys and some of the other biological surveys and I guess, you know, I'm usually, I'm okay at kind of working on the fly and going off the cuff a little bit, but you know, I, I haven't had a chance to look at this information. I'm getting text messages from my office, from people who have looked at it. There's, there's still some concerns. A lot of what I'm getting is fairly technical. I just don't know how to convey that, you know, in, in this setting. I, I guess suffice to say, it, it does feel somewhat like a disservice just the way the process has unfolded. And, and that, that's a concern for us. I guess I'll, I'll leave it at that. But finally, you know, I think one of the most important issues that we also wanted to highlight was that, you know, we do believe it's inappropriate to compartmentalize the, the exploratory portion of this project from the production side. And I think, you know, everybody in this room, I think, and, and elsewhere knows that no, you know, no one's proposing to do test drilling simply for the sake of doing test drilling, right? That's, that's not a, it's not a discrete project. And, and there are existing state and county policies and goals that are related to carbon emissions and transitioning away from fossil fuels that are, that are relevant to county planning decisions. And, and it feels like piecemealing this portion of the project to streamline approval. It does in fact pave the way for the installation of real infrastructure and it shifts the baseline upon which future projects will be evaluated. And that, that's very concerning to us. So we do ask that you, at the, at a minimum, please require a full environmental impact report to evaluate the full cumulative extent of proposed new oil development in the Cuyama Valley. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Mr. Gleisman to be followed by Catherine Anderson and Mark Chitello.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes. Could you please state your name so we make sure we have it?
Yeah, this is Steve Gleisman from the Cuyama Valley. Thank you, Chair Martinez and Commission members, for this opportunity to point out the potential significant negative impacts of the exploratory drilling project on important botanical resources, which I want to focus on. I'm a PhD botanist and ecologist with degrees from UC Santa Barbara and I'm, and I'm a known expert in California flora. I'm also an emeritus professor at UC Santa Cruz, where I taught field botany and natural history for more than thirty years. Many of our field trips included time in the Cuyama Valley. I begin by pointing out the presence of rare and endangered plants on any project site necessitating the search for an alternative site. And that's potential presence. The applicants themselves state there's a high potential for the presence of at least eight species of concern at the project site and at least two listed endangered plant species. This includes the beautiful Kern Mallow, the exotic woolly threads with its small sunflowers and cascading threadlight extensions, a diminutive, hard-to-find, hardest-spot Blakely spine, spine flower found nowhere else except in the foothills of the Sierra Madre Mountains of Southern California. In terms of the plant surveys, I'm thrown off greatly by the fact that eight, eight PM last night, that the new survey showed up. I tried quickly to look at the two lists online, but I didn't really have time to compare side to side. And I also remind you that twenty-twenty-two was even a drier year than twenty-twenty-one. And the president, and if they were doing surveys anytime, February, March, they were not going to find anything. And then twenty-twenty-three, although it was a wet year, it was also a cold year. And things really didn't start to bloom until almost into April. So again, I'm, I question not only the, the validity of these very qualitative surveys with no natural numbers, no abundance, no species diversity, and, and the similarity between twenty-two and twenty-three, when there were so many differences between the two years, again, calls into question the validity of, of these surveys. Just for me, as an expert in California flora, that's just not, not well done. And the mitigation measures they proposed if species of concern are found on the site in the short one-week window before project commencement, for me are wholly invalid. Claiming they can quote transplant seeds, quote, is not possible. Cuttings can't be taken of small annual plants. Seeds must be gathered from mature plants with maturation taking weeks if not months. The one-week window does not allow this. Worse yet, there's no indication in the proposal when the start date for the project will occur and if it will coincide with this very small window of appropriate conditions. So as an expert in California flora, I affirmantly state that the project as currently proposed would have a high potential for significant negative impact on important plant resources and recommend that if you choose not to deny the project, you must at least require a full EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gleisman. And next is Mr. Yalobas?
Next speaker will be Catherine Anderson to be followed by Mark Chitello.
Okay, please state your name. Oh, there you are.
Good morning, Chair Martinez and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Catherine Anderson. I am a local farmer, scientist and researcher and had been involved with the North Fork Frost Pond analysis. The FMND failed to disclose all aspects of construction and development of an exploratory oil well, leading to gross underestimation of the duration and intensity of its adverse impacts. Well drilling rigs are operated twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, until drilling has been completed, estimated here to be twenty-four days. The FMND did not examine this day and night activity nor the ensuing well testing with pumps, separator tanks and other equipment to handle the well's products potentially taking twenty days or more. If the well is to be abandoned, it requires the same drilling derrick, trucking and equipment for an additional twenty to thirty days. Failure to account for extended continuous day and night operation beyond the FMND's stated twenty-four drilling days greatly expands environmental impacts caused by the project. The FMND failed also to include views from scenic Highway one sixty-six. Based on visual simulations provided in our letter, the seventy-foot-tall derrick will be easily seen from this designated state highway. As development activities will continue around the clock, the entire drilling derrick will be lit all night along with thirty-six thousand watts of light towers of an unspecified height lighting the well pad. Drilling is the noisiest part of well development and as it would occur twenty-four hours, seven days a week, would represent a significant impact of continuous noise coupled with intense lighting adversely affecting nesting birds, foraging wildlife and ambient noise levels in the vicinity. The impacts during well abandonment would be much the same. The severity of these impacts were not examined under either sections four point one, four point four, four point eleven, and the minimal measures proposed would not mitigate these adverse impacts to less than significant levels requiring an EIR. Their quality emissions equipment inventory is incomplete, contradictory, and analysis admittedly omits portions of the greenhouse gas emissions in its total calculations and would require an EIR to correct these deficiencies. The FMND did not properly identify contaminated materials that could be produced by the project. Hydrocarbons, heavy metals and radioactive material can be present in drilling mud and produced water and no handling procedures are discussed. Contaminated equipment washout water is to be trucked offsite daily. However, the FMND does not identify expected quantities, storage, transport trucks, routes or terminal disposal location necessitating a hazardous risk analysis and appropriate mitigation measures as part of an EIR. Lastly, the oil and gas lease forming the basis for the surface use agreement between the applicant and the landowner was the applicant and the landowner was valid for only three years and expired in February 9, 2020. As valid application and entitlement to the land underlying a project is critical to the planning process, this project must be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Have your name.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I'm Mark Chitillo. On behalf of the Cuyaman's Against Water Grabs, I'd like to welcome you as Chair and to our new Commissioner Reed, thank you for being here. Going to touch on SEQA and then findings, issues. Under SEQA, you can only use a mitigated negative declaration for a project for which there is no substantial evidence supporting a fair argument of a significant impact. You've heard expert testimony from Dr. Gleisman, as well as the written testimony that establishes that there is substantial evidence of project impacts to greenhouse gases, air quality, biological, water, light, noise, policy inconsistencies, and on Route 66. For those reasons, the county must prepare an EIR in order to be able to process this document. Approving this document with a negative declaration is contrary to SEQA and would be legally vulnerable. On the SEQA process issues, one of the main requirements of SEQA is that there's a stable project description, that, that the public, decision-makers, and the person preparing the environmental analysis knows what the project contains, it does not change. What we've heard today is a series of continuing changes. The water was, the, the waste was going to Baker's Field, then it was going to go to Wasco, and now it's going to Santa Maria. None of that is reflected in the environmental analysis. In fact, the analysis that was considered in the, in the negative declaration was complete the well, plug, and abandon. End of story. That was the project that was considered in the negative declaration. It was changed after the neg-dec comment period was closed, and now includes this whole other phase of potential production into the future. Those elements, including the cumulative impacts, were not considered in this environmental document. You are left in the dark, as, as is the public, as to the number of significant issues because of this changing project description. You're also required to consider cumulative impacts from related projects, as well as to not allow the piecemealing of projects, which is exactly what's happening here. For those reasons, the Commission should direct the preparation of an EIR. However, I believe also that you should consider denying the project based on your inability to make the findings. One of the key findings required by the municipal code, by the Land Use Development Code, is that there's been a consideration of alternative sites that would avoid those significant impacts. There's no evidence in the record that there actually was any consideration of alternative sites. The site that's being proposed was scraped back in 2011, that's why there's limited resources there, but those resources are coming back, as Mr. Gleisman indicated, that there needs to be a more comprehensive biological analysis over a longer period of time. The second, well, the third finding you have to make is that there's no detriment to public health and safety and welfare of the community. You're on a scenic highway that's known as Blood Alley, and you're going to put more road, more trucks, we don't know which way they're going, but they're going to be on that road. That's not been considered. That gives you a basis for finding, denying another project. And the last one is the site suitability for production. One of the, the last findings you have to make, look carefully at the findings, is that the site is suitable for production. We don't even have the information because that part of the project was never even considered in the environmental document. You don't have the evidence to make the findings, so based on that, we would implore you to deny this project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chitillo. Next.
Mr. Chitillo was the last in that group. Did you want to go to those who are physically present or on Zoom?
Let's go to those that are physically present.
I believe you have those speakers listed.
I think that only last, well, Mr. Patera went already, so it's Dana Pagencoff? Okay, if you could please state your, your name again.
My name's Dano Pagencoff. Good afternoon, Commissioners. As a landowner with property less than four miles away from the proposed site, I request that the Planning Commission deny this permit due to the impacts of this well on the Cuyama Valley and our overdrafted water basin. I'm curious as to why Brodeia and the Harvard Endowment Fund is suddenly interested in drilling for oil. Years ago, Harvard stated that it was divesting its interest in oil and gas profits. The drilling will be completed by an out-of-state company on land owned by Brodeia, Harvard University's investment arm. They don't own the mineral rights to the natural resources underground. West Bay is leasing those rights from an unidentified group of owners. Who are these owners? As usual with Harvard Endowment, this does not pass the smell test. There have been several exploratory wells dug in this area over the past few decades. All have been drilled, abandoned, and capped after finding no oil or gas. I think that they may be looking for natural gas, but if they are looking for oil, then I'm afraid that they would need to frac in order to get the oil to come up and accumulate enough to be profitable. This has the potential to contaminate our underground aquifer. It seems to me that Brodeia is more focused on water rights, with its holdings in Paso Robles and Cuyama Valley currently operating as vineyards. Could this two-mile-deep well be used for water? Is there a deeper aquifer? If this well is deemed no good for oil and gas, how much water could it produce? Could this water be sold off to a needy user in the eastern part of our valley? As a chemical engineer, I have a few concerns. When drilling this well, are they going to truck in water for drilling mud? Or will they use water from one of Brodeia's 15 local wells that are already using an excessive amount of water that have lowered our water table 100 feet in the last eight years? Their request does not say where they will get their water from. On Google Maps, it appears that there is a well less than 1,000 feet away. Seepage from active and idle oil wells can contaminate groundwater. A study from Santa Barbara County's wells within the Orca Oil Field concluded that 20% of water wells sampled contained chemical contaminants originating from oil drilling. A 2022 study from University of Colorado Boulder found oil wells drilled between 2001 and 2019 are contaminated with chemicals from oil drilling, including benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and xylene. 22% of affected wells were contaminated by at least two of these toxic chemicals. If oil or natural gas is found, will this lead to a new oil field? How does this impact the goals of Santa Barbara County? Protect Cuyama Valley groundwater and prevent increased trucking on Highway 166? I recommend an EIR at the least. They just wanted to build three giant frost ponds in the same area for frost mitigation that does not work. Now they want to drill a two-mile-deep well. Something sounds fishy about this, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And, and am I correct that Mr. Benjamin Patel, you, you already spoke? Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. So now we're just with the, those that are on Zoom or online?
All right. I did see more hands earlier. I have just one hand raised currently, but if you like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand, and I'll just go down the list. Our first speaker will be Carla Magana Figueroa, to be followed by, and I apologize for pronunciation, by the way, Mona Demogee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Carla Magana Figueroa, and I'm currently a resident here in California. Just to give you some background, I'm a first-generation immigrant. My mom actually picked grapes in this area of California when I was growing up, and thankfully, we've been able to improve our, our financial lot since then. I'm also an alumna of Harvard as well. I'm just here to testify in opposition of this permit for even exploration. You know, I, this conversation has been really enriching, but I think at the end of the day, you know, we can put our heads in the sand and say, oh, you know, this is just an assessment, or this is just the, the initial phase, but I think what we have to remember is that climate change is real, it's here, it impacts the most vulnerable among us, such as migrant farmworkers, who will be impacted by this, and California leads on this issue. So, you know, I just implore healthy skepticism of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Mona Demogee, to, excuse me, and then to be followed by Lynn Carlisle.
Mr. Demogee?
Can you all hear me?
Yes, and again, if you could just state your name at the beginning. Thank you.
Of course, yeah. My name is Mona Demogee. I'm a professor at UC Santa Barbara, and I'm also a parent, and I'm speaking to urge you to, to deny this proposal. I think a lot of what I want to mention has already been spoken to, and from a really wonderful range of perspectives, which I think show the, the importance and impact of this proposal on, on so many of the stakeholders in our community, most notably perhaps the migrant farmworkers who are grappling with the severity of the groundwater crisis. I, I just wanted to point particularly to the point that's been made about how it's sort of disingenuous to continually refer to this project as, you know, just, just, for the sake of testing, because we all know well that, that this is a gateway project that will, is intended to lead to drilling, and so any implications that it's benign in any way, I think are, are disingenuous, because they lead to very real effects, and I urge you to stop the drilling project also, because as we know, and has been noted, climate change is, we are in the midst of the climate change catastrophe that we see impacting Santa Barbara County and beyond. California is a leader, and the, the world looks to counties like Santa Barbara to see, you know, what, what actions we're willing to, to take in order to keep oil in the ground at this point. Its catastrophic effects are already felt. And finally, speaking from the point of view as a, as a college educator, and I've been very privy to the organizing efforts both at Harvard and in the UC system around divestment from fossil fuel companies, so it's particularly startling to see Harvard, who has signed on to divestment, which was part of a decade-long, student-led organizing effort, to see that, their involvement in, in, in putting new wells in the ground, frankly, which are damaging for all the reasons that have been indicated. So I urge you to really think about our accountability to future generations, and, and to protect the resources that we still have left. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Lynn Carlisle, to be followed by Grant Pierce.
Ms. Carlisle?
Good morning.
Yes, could you state your name, your full name?
Yes, my name is Lynn Carlisle. I'm the Executive Director of the Cuyama Valley Family Resource Center. I've served the Cuyama Valley for the past 13 years. As this Commission is aware, the Cuyama Valley's groundwater aquifer is one of the most severely-stressed basins in California. The Cuyama Valley's only source of groundwater is groundwater. We received a little runoff, no surface water, no state water. Every drop of water in this aquifer counts, and every drop is precious. As has been mentioned, seepage from active and idle oil wells can contaminate groundwater. A 2022 study of Santa Barbara County's wells in the Orca Oil Field concluded that 20% of water wells sampled contained chemical contaminants originating from oil drilling. Other studies have found petroleum hydrocarbons and toxic chemicals from oil drilling in 20 to 30% of groundwater samples. These data suggest that an examination of the potential contamination of the Cuyama aquifer by the proposed well and any resultant oil drilling is warranted, particularly in the already severely-stressed Cuyama Basin. To permit such a well that will use nearly half an acre foot of water for something other than agriculture and introduce the risk of contamination to an aquifer that has had nearly 10 years of study at a cost of $10 million and counting to develop a groundwater sustainability plan to comply with state law would run counter to the collective effort of so many, including Santa Barbara County, to protect and restore the Cuyama Basin. Further, as has been discussed, this exploratory well, the first proposed in 10 years, could lead to an increased grease, increased greenhouse gas emissions, which would hamper state and county efforts to achieve their climate-related goals. The MND is insufficient to lead the Commission to move this project forward for these reasons. It does not examine the impact on Cuyama's groundwater and potential for contamination. It does not clearly address the source of water and the potential impact of drawing .46 acre-feet of water from a critically overdrafted aquifer. Given this morning's revelation that drilling mud and waste will be transported to the Santa Maria landfill along Highway 166, the MND does not address the impact on highway safety along a known dangerous road. The Cuyama Valley has long been impacted by extractive industries profiting absent corporate interests, hedge funds, even an East Coast university endowment fund. These entities reap significant profits from Cuyama's natural resources while leaving behind significant consequences, a dwindling aquifer, vanishing ecosystems, impacted air quality, and highway safety, consequences that are left for local residents and local government agencies to deal with. For the reasons cited above and those mentioned by others, we urge you to not certify the MND for this project and open the door to yet another, another set of negative consequences that will surely be left behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlisle.
Our next speaker will be Grant Pace, to be followed by Seth Steiner.
Good afternoon to the members of the Santa Barbara Planning Commission. My name is Grant Pace. I'm a two L at Harvard Law School. I represent a campus student group, Fossil Fuel Divest Harvard, and speaking today, I am deeply grateful for the opportunity to speak here on the potential activity on land owned by Harvard subsidiaries. I'm testifying in opposition of the requested permit on Harvard's land for an exploratory oil well in Cuyama Valley that will exceed our remaining carbon budget for habitable planet, causing disproportionate harms to our most vulnerable populations. In undergrad, I conducted published climate science research at NASA Goddard Institute for Space Studies. The urgent need to end fossil fuel expansion is what led me to Harvard Law. It is not speculative to say that this proposed exploration is an effort to expand fossil fuel development, which science tells us is incompatible with our survival. The International Energy Agency reported that our global carbon budget securing a habitable planet requires no new development of unabated fossil fuel infrastructure past 2021. It is now 2024. Peer-reviewed research by Trout et al. in 2022 finds that staying within a 1.5 degrees Celsius carbon budget implies leaving almost 40% of developed reserves of fossil fuels unextracted. We have no room for new fossil fuel development if we want to survive. We have to actively phase out existing fossil fuel reserves because their emissions exceed the threshold for habitable planet. As such, the Secretary General of the UN has called fossil fuel expansion "moral and economic madness." Fossil Fuel Divest Harvard challenged the legality of Harvard's fossil fuel investments, prompting it to divest in 2021. And yet Harvard's land is being used to attempt to profit off of accelerated destruction of the planet through these land grabs and fossil fuel developments. In conclusion, I ask that you please vote in opposition of the permit application. The perm is a death sentence to almost all life on the planet and powers Harvard to continue its colonial violence at the expense of farmers' rights and livelihoods in the Cuyama Basin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Seth Steiner, to be followed by Pamela Bazook, and then I believe we have one additional in-person speaker. Mr. Steiner?
Good day, Commissioners. Can I be heard?
Yes, if you could please state your full name for the record.
Thank you. I'm Seth Steiner.
Hold on one second. One of the Commissioners asked if we could turn up the volume to hear you. Okay, now, Mr. Steiner, can you try again?
Yes, your role is usually consequential. Is the volume satisfactory?
Mr. Steiner, your, your timer is running. Go, go ahead with your comments.
Yes. Your role is hugely consequential and respected, as it helps shape the quality and direction of many aspects of our lives and our environment. We depend on you to reach decisions that wisely judge the matter at hand, and to do so in the context, context of its larger reality. I ask that you view and assess this matter in the context of two facts. First, clean water is a great deal more valuable than oil. And second, the US is already the world's largest producer of petroleum and natural gas, and its largest exporter of gas. Wastewater used in oil extraction puts our drinking water at risk. Oil companies have already injected huge quantities of wastewater directly into our protected aquifers, and thousands of wastewater wells protected aquifers, and thousands of wastewater wells across the state are still contaminating drinking water. We're in the midst of an unavoidable transition away from a fossil-fueled economy and toward one in which we can live sustainably and with health and prosperity. The conversion is necessary to reduce the trillions of dollars of dislocation and destruction that would otherwise be caused by climate change. This proposed well directly conflicts with state and local efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. A full environmental impact report is necessary, including assessment of any potential expanded drilling. When a project is evaluated, the facts have varied levels of weight, some
Mr. Steiner, it seems like we lost the connection, because I can't hear you. Mr. Realloves, it looked like you.
We can move on and come back to him if he comes.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next speaker, which is?
Pamela Bazook, and then I believe we have another speaker. And then if I've missed you, if you're online, I've missed you, go ahead and raise your hand now, and I can call on you after our next few speakers.
Hello, my name is Pamela Bazook. Thank you, Chair, Margina, and commissioners. I'm a resident of New Cuyama, and I serve in the Cuyama Valley Community Association as a board member, and I'm also involved in several other communities and committees to preserve the natural resources of the Cuyama Valley. I represent myself today. I requested the Planning Commission deny this permit due to the impacts of this well on Cuyama Valley. Once again, Harvard is attempting to further exploit the precious resources of the Cuyama Valley. As we have previously heard, they have done in multiple areas around the world. The MND has stated that there are significant environmental impacts that can be mitigated. Yet, once this land is disturbed to the degree described, including relocation of wildlife and possible injury to wildlife, the environment has been harmed. There is mention of grazing lands being abandoned due to drought. Habitats can regenerate if left undisturbed. Yet we see miles of pastureland along Highway 166 filled with cattle. Harvard's extensive vineyards certainly have had an impact on the grazing lands, natural habitat, and the water. Most importantly, we are all aware of the environmental impact of fossil fuels on the global climate. We do not need to exacerbate the pollution created by fossil fuels. Noted in their statement of this proposed project is that there are several exploratory oil wells drilled and abandoned. It seems that the exploration for oil has been done in the past. Therefore, if oil existed, it would have been found. Furthermore, if the project should find oil, there would presumably be more extensive construction to extract the oil, which would require even more impact on the Cuyama Valley. We really must ask, what is Harvard's real intent by this project? In previous hearings, the planning commissioners, you have protected the Cuyama Valley's critically overdrafted groundwater and natural resources. I ask you to deny this project again and to continue to protect the Cuyama Valley. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to voice my concerns.
Mr. Steiner, did you want to try again, finishing up your comments?
Yes, I'm sorry. Would I like to try again?
Yeah, you had about 30 seconds left in your comment section. So if you can, if you like, you can take advantage of those 30 seconds and provide us your ending comments.
Well, I haven't changed any settings from my side. Were you not able to clearly hear my comments previously?
No, we heard them. It's just that towards the end, they were just, you just fell off of the audio, so we couldn't hear anything for the last 30 seconds.
I see, yes. Thanks for this opportunity. The proposed well directly conflicts with state and local efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. A full environmental impact report is necessary, including assessment of any potential expanded drilling. When a project is evaluated, the facts have varied levels of weight, some critical and others not so. It's your authority and responsibility to note the distinctions and act accordingly. Please don't let the camel's nose under our tent by approving this exploration in the Cuyama Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Steiner.
Mr. Chair, we do have another hand up online. Would you like to take that first, or do our in-person speaker first?
Let Mr. Walsh put his in first, so. Mr. Walsh?
Thank you, commissioners, for giving me the opportunity to speak here briefly. I'll be brief. For about 10 years, I'm Casey Walsh. I'm a professor of anthropology at UC Santa Barbara. I conduct participatory research with communities that use water for all reasons, but primarily agriculture. For about 10 years now, I've been working with the community in Cuyama, accompanying them as they engage with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act process. So I've been there as they've created the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. I've been there as they've deliberated and thought through the groundwater sustainability plan. I've been there as they've come to you before to sort of uphold the principles of that law and county law in dealing with North Forks reservoirs. And I've accompanied my friends and colleagues in Cuyama through all of these sort of moments. I think this is another moment in which you have the opportunity to respond to your constituents in the Cuyama Valley and their local knowledge about what's going on there in a positive way by denying this request to drill an oil and gas well in that area. And I would say that the principal reason is that we are obliged by this state law and by county law to avoid negative impacts in quality and quantity of groundwater resources. And these kinds of deep wells, especially oil and gas wells, inevitably run the risk, and as we've seen in testimony, considerable risk of contaminating aquifers with oil and gas. So I think that's a really important consideration. I would say that apart from the water issues, I've heard so much testimony today that puts into question, in my eyes at least, the sort of quality completeness of the actual sort of, the actual sort of application here. There's all kinds of evidence now that the botanical studies aren't complete, they're incomplete, they're sort of done at the wrong times, perhaps. Some of them weren't even delivered to us to look at until last night. So it seems like this whole process has really sort of not been done in a satisfactorily complete way by the applicant. So protect the groundwater, question this application for its inherent weaknesses, and reject and deny the permit, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And our last speaker of the day is?
Our last speaker will be Amelia Cobb.
Hello, my name is Amelia Cobb, and I am an alum of the Harvard Kennedy School. And as an alum, I request the Planning Commission deny this permit due to the impacts of this well on the Cuyama Valley and our overdrafted water basin. As the Planning Commission is aware, the Cuyama Valley groundwater aquifer is one of the most severely stressed basins in California. Through the Cuyama Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency, the county, along with three other counties and local growers and stakeholders, they've worked over the past 10 years to create a plan to achieve sustainability for this aquifer. The Cuyama Valley's single source of water is from groundwater. Negligible runoff, no surface water, no state water. Every drop of water in this aquifer counts, and every drop is precious. The impact of drilling a well of this size and depth in any region should require an examination of its potential impact on local groundwater, not just the exploratory well and potentially future wells on groundwater storage, but also on contamination of Cuyama's only and dwindling source of water. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Cobb was our last speaker.
All right.
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yes.
Give a few minutes for the applicant for rebuttal period, and then staff is asking for a three- to five-minute break so that they could get their responses together.
Yeah, I was going to ask the commission, I saw the timer being 12:15 right now, of whether, of what kind of break we will be looking at, if it's just a 10, 15-minute break and trying to address some issues, or are we talking about taking our hour lunch? I'm looking for the commissioner's direction. Mr. Park?
I don't want to be eating lunch at 1:30. And I've been in enough of these rodeos to hear we're almost there. And then somebody, in fact, you did it on Strausman Energy, takes 30 minutes asking questions or whatever, and, oh, gosh, we thought we were going to really be hitting the deliberations at 12:30, and we wind up much later. If everyone believes we're going to be done, and we're close enough to decide this by, say, 12:45, sure, let's give it a shot. But if we're not, let's take our lunch.
I agree. Meaning, I think we should take a break now for lunch.
That's what I'm kind of favoring. I'll just shorten up our discussion a little while, which is take a lunch break right now, and there'll be, come back at 1:15. Agreed? Okay, adjourned.
Well, does staff need a little more time, because they get a lunch, too?
Oh, that's true. That's true.
Chair and commissioners, I'm totally talking for staff, but they are only asking for five minutes, so I think they can get their comments together in the lunch break.
Okay, so let's make it 1:20. Thank you. Adjourned for now.
Oh, my gosh. Oh my gosh.
Well, good afternoon everyone. We'll start whacking the planning commission as promised. We're back here about 1:20 a little after and continuing on with the second item of our agenda. I believe it's staff's opportunity to address any issues it needs to address.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think we'll start out with this is staff has a couple responses to a couple things that were said. And if you have some other concerns, questions, they'll fault, they can provide more. And then I think we also are, if that's okay with you, have the applicant stand up. There were some questions about water use and waste and where the destination for that. And so I think they'd like to stand up and clarify that for the record.
That sounds great.
Let me start. So Mr. Chair and members of the commission, just structurally, there was a comment made during the public comment. It also showed up in some of the written public comments prior to the hearing that the lease for the mineral rights here is expired. And so we worked with the applicant yesterday to obtain documents showing they do in fact have a valid lease to produce the minerals on this property. So that issue is no longer outstanding. Couple of things with the negative declaration. There was a comment made about cumulative impacts and that we need to take a look at cumulative impacts. If you go into the N D, each issue area section has a cumulative impact statement. And essentially, the project's incremental impacts are not cumulatively considerable, right? It's a single well in an area. The impacts of the project are minor in nature, and they do not contribute significantly to cumulative impacts in the Kuyama Valley. We heard concerns about night lighting. And Ms. Anderson did describe the drilling operation correctly in that when a drill rig shows up to a drilling site, once they start, they don't stop until the drilling is complete. It's not like a standard construction project where the workers show up at 7:30 and leave at 5:00. They're working 24 hours a day, seven days a week until the drilling is done. And so once they erect that drill rig, night lighting is a part of that. And so, once they erect that drill rig, night lighting is a part of that. And in this case, the project site is located just about, just under a mile away from Highway 166 in an area that is far removed from urban or populated areas. In an area that's also in the context of an existing producing oil field. So, right on the other side of Highway 166, you've got the Russell Ranch Oil Field operated by E and B Resources. And, you know, this, this well would be drilled within a mile of that oil field boundary. The well would be located just under a mile up the canyon. Views of the drill rig would be partially blocked by topography. But certainly, there would be some light visible for a brief moment as you drive down the highway from, from 166. So that is the context of the lighting issue. And then I think, I think that's it from staff proactively. And certainly, if you have any other questions, we're happy to jump in.
Hearing staff, do commissioners have any questions for staff? I see Commissioner Park?
Yes, I, I have a question about the point about the lease not being expired. And I'm, I'm glad Mr. Briggs addressed that because I had remembered that's something I wanted to ask about. And I was going to ask Mr. Ruiz or Mr. Baker, you know, during their rebuttal. But, you know, I still think that actual facts need to be in the public record. And I think an assurance by staff that the lease is not a problem, it's not an outstanding issue, is not the same thing as having a document or some fact in the record that tells me why it's not an outstanding issue. Maybe Rodea said by email, okay, we're, we're not going to hold you to the expiration date. Or maybe they executed a, a new lease, or, or who knows what, but we don't know. And so we can't contest that fact or accept it. It's just not really in the record, and it should be. End of sermon. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from any staff? No, okay. So I believe this is the opportunity, Mr. Rich, that you indicated that the applicant would like to at least address questions from the staff or clarify, clarify issues for the commission?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the applicant would not take this down, but pretty darned close. No problem.
To clarify, so again, my name was Ben Reese. I'm a, I graduated from University of Montana. And so my, my degree's in wildlife biology. And so I've got a lot of background in, in animals and, and plants. So I kind of was in a little bit of a rush there. So just wanted you guys to know that. Also, I wanted to clarify something. The, in, in being good stewards of what we're trying to figure out in the trucking of, of, of the cuttings, we had thought the Santa Maria, we're looking at distances, what's closer. And so just to set the record clear, McKittrick is in Bakersfield, and that's where we are. A place called Clean Harbor, which accepts this type of cuttings, is where we're going to go. I just wanted to make sure we set the record straight. Santa Maria is a little closer, but this is about five miles further. So it's still closer than what we listed on in Bakersfield. But McKittrick is still considered in Bakersfield. So I just want to make sure that the record's clear, that it's not getting jumbled all over the place. And the second thing to make clear is we are getting the water from the site. We are using the, a local, a well that will be on site. That's our, that's our plan.
Commissioner Reed?
Oh, so you've, you've made the point that the drilling mud is going to go to McKittrick?
Yes.
Good, that's, okay.
Essentially, McKittrick and Taft are considered kind of the, they're the, the same with, as in Bakersfield. So if you look at McKittrick, a lot of times it'll show Taft and Bakersfield.
I've been all over the country, that country. I know it fairly well.
It's not a lot to look at, but there's a lot of.
McKittrick, is that a level two site it's going to?
Yeah.
Yeah, because my main concern before was Santa Maria being just a garden variety municipal landfill.
Yeah.
I had a question. Yeah, okay.
So we're just trying to, what we, we try to do is to cut the, to, to cut travel down and, and truck amounts. And what we're looking at in truck amounts of, at a, at a high end is probably going to be like 15 or 16 truckloads. It's potentially going to be less than that, so.
15 to 16 truckloads a day, or?
No, total, total, total. Yeah, so it's even less than the truck a day that, that was put, put on there. I, West Bay, Mr. Tim Baker and Mr. Pat Gibson are on also. If you guys have any other questions for them, or, or I'm not sure. I think they might have wanted to address a couple of things that were said during the, the, the public comment, if, if that's okay with you guys.
Any commissioners have, well, Commissioner Reed?
I have an additional one. With respect to the soil type at the site, you know, in the, in the mitigated negative declaration, page six, it characterizes the soil type as pleasant and sandy loam. But I believe that came from a USDA Conservation Service Soil Map. And they characterize the pleasant and sandy loam as, you know, a class one soil type, very fertile, et cetera, well-drained. Yet you say it's not really suitable, doesn't seem to be very fertile. But your, your data comes from personal observation. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. So even though it's sandy loam, what we see throughout the, I call that the valley also, the San Joaquin Valley, very similar to one another, is that you see this, this soil that gets heavily used in its past life, that it can never really recover.
Right.
Even if they reproduce nutrients and different types of, of, of chemicals to help it, whether it's nitrogen or whatever manures or type of soil they try to use to, to integrate growth, it, it's really tough for these grounds to come back. Like I said, it could have been from fire. It could have been, from, from, from our point of view, it looks like it may have been in early ag. And things, chemicals were used a long time ago in early ag that damaged soil. They eventually go through, but it's hard to repair that. And it's a really windy corridor. So when you look at how the trajectory of wind can sometimes play on the botanical side of, of certain species, it'll, it could cut these, cut the shoots off a lot of these plants because it's really in a wind trajectory area. So just a thought.
One last one. You said you got your degree at University of Montana?
Missoula, yes.
Missoula, that was my question, Bozeman or Missoula?
Yeah, Missoula, yes. Bozeman State.
Was once my dream school. Yeah.
Thank you. And like I said, Mr. Gibson and, and Mr. Baker are on the line. And I don't know if they wanted to address anything else that came from the public comment.
Well, I see Commissioner Cooney has a question here.
Yes, this is not necessarily a botany related question, but just generally, there is a number, an estimate in the, in the documents that says a specific timeframe for the drilling process. And I wondered if any updated information you have or otherwise would allow you to give an estimate of what this is going to take.
I couldn't give you an estimate right now because I'm not, I didn't bring that with me. But if there is an estimated time, I believe we have that. And we would stick to that time and actually hopefully make it a shorter amount of time.
Yeah, of course. But there are all kinds of things that could interfere with it. But I think the community would appreciate an idea of, you know, the inconvenience caused by the drilling.
I would, I could tell you the way that, that in, in my view and in working with this company, they're, they normally meet their targets sooner than what the days worked are. So maybe they could say it could be three or four days different from the amount of time we allotted on there. Okay, that's all I had.
Commissioner Cooney through the chair. We actually do have those numbers. In the air quality technical report, they stated that they were going to take approximately 24 days. So that's what we're allowing them to do. They could very likely go, go quicker and have it less time, but what we're allowing is 24 days.
What happens if they don't, you know, it's three months later and they haven't finished a project? They leave, go away, come back, you know, set up again. Is there any limitation on, on extending the time within which drilling has to occur?
Commissioner Cooney through the chair. If I'm understanding your question correctly, are you asking if they drill and then don't test or don't, don't explore or? So the permit, the conditions of approval have a requirement that basically says they have to take some sort of action within a year, whether that be starting abandonment or supplying planning staff within a new application for a production plan. So we do have restrictions in place.
Okay, so I, I didn't catch that in the document. But you're saying whether it's a successful test at the bottom of a 11,000-foot hole or not, they can't just leave it there. And I was more asking about how long it would take to get the drilling done, the noise, inconvenience, other issues that were raised in the negative declaration.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Cooney. Staff studied 24 days of drilling time. That's an estimate. And as we've heard, it could be a few days more, it could be a few days less. It's really difficult to tell with a well that's being drilled this deep. If it goes over a day or two, we don't really see that as a compliance issue. If they were to stop drilling and return to the site, or if drilling took, you know, as you stated, a month or two, you know, our division would need to look into compliance options. Are they out of compliance with their permit? Well, then staff would issue a notice of violation and we would follow up accordingly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Briggs.
And seeing no other questions, I, I take it this is the time we take it under consideration. Well, oh, did they, did, did the people that were zooming in or somehow?
Especially on that last question, and if they had anything else, they, hopefully they can hear me.
And?
Yeah, possible, Mr. Chairman. I want to convey that we're very sympathetic to the comments.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you please state your name again, just so we just have a clear record?
Tim Baker with West Bay Exploration.
Thank you.
I apologize for that.
No problem.
I wanted to convey that we're, we're sympathetic to the concerns that were expressed today. We did want to mention that Harvard does not have a financial interest in this. They don't own the minerals here. We also want to point out, there's been a tremendous evolution in the drilling techniques and also California law with respect to drilling these wells. I think a lot of the wells that were referred to in the earlier discussion were wells drilled decades ago. They did not have any deep concerns for sources of freshwater drinking. Later, Wells did. State of California updated their, their requirements substantially. What we're offering to do is, we're, of course, we're going to be drilling the surface string with fresh water and bent night mud. We will then case it, cement it to surface, allow the cement to set, and then run an evaluation log to determine whether we have good integrity. We will, of course, supply that to Santa Barbara. That log is essentially called a bond log. It looks at the bond, the cement, the formation, and to the casing. There's no heavy metals anticipated in the drilling of this well formation that we expect to encounter. Does not, from the analysis, it outprop various places in California. So we've, we've got some sample information from those locations, then there's no indication of heavy metal. So I would not anticipate that being an issue. If we're successful, we're willing to offer what we're doing here in Michigan. And that is quarterly optical gas imaging with a camera. That's going to be a federal requirement in all wells. And we're offering, of course, to do that. We're also offering to put in groundwater monitoring wells to monitor the quality of, of the water for the life of any facility that we might construct there. And finally, we don't anticipate having frac these horizons. This isn't a resource play like you see in Texas and some places in, in North Dakota. We anticipate our reservoirs would be sand reservoirs. So we do not anticipate that. And with that, I conclude my comments.
Okay, and so I understand there was another gentleman on, from West, from West, but I don't hear any comments from him. So I take it those are all the comments from the applicant? Or does Mr. Commissioner Cooney have a question?
Just a question on the last point for Mr. Baker. For those of us who, who've done work on farms but not on the oil wells, what is the ultimate goal of the test well? Is it to, to discover oil in certain quantities? Or when you mentioned sand, is it, is it that that you'd be mining to bring up the oil?
Well, essentially, the reservoirs consist of, of sand, where there's, you know, sandstone. So it's a rock and has regular porosity between the grains. And that is where the fluid is contained. And so we'll be drilling through several sand horizons in this prospect. Each one, we will evaluate as we go down by taking, looking at samples. And then when we're done, we'll run elect, we call electric logs to evaluate what the rock type is. The logs tell us not only the rock type, but also the fluids contained within and the porosity of the rock.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, so I take it this is the time we take it under consideration. It's District One, isn't it? So if you wanted to make the first comments or hold your comments to the last?
Yeah, that, you know, our practice of hearing from the commissioner whose district it is is a laudable one. But every now and then, something comes up in the first district that wishes, that I wish was in the fifth district like it started. And this is one of those. I'm really disappointed in, starting with the regulations under which we consider this project, where there is overlap between the environmental study necessary for the drilling and, and we're foreclosed from asking questions, not asking questions because we do that anyhow, but having the benefit of study of the well as it's projected to be once it's, once the validity is, is determined. So I don't think there's an easy path to rejection of the, of the environmental impact report without rejecting the project altogether. But I would very much like to hear from the rest of the commissioners where they stand on, on this specific issue of this project.
Commissioner Reed, your lights on, so I'll pick you first.
Yes, okay. I know much has been made of the fact that in this case, the exploration plan, the test well, has been severed from the production plan, which is different than items which have been considered over the past in this county. I think that actually offers a great advantage. The reason is that this is a test well production plan. It has a very finite lifespan. It has a definite beginning. It has a definite end. It ends at such point as a determination is made. If there are oil deposits in economically beneficial recoverable amounts, either yes or no. There it ends, quite unlike a production plan. An oil production plan to produce oil from a known deposit has a beginning, but it is open-ended. It may extend for, for years. That's one definition. I think in addition, since a production plan produces oil that will ultimately be consumed, at that point, it's quite appropriate to perhaps consider other things like, well, the global issues that have appeared in. that have appeared in so many of the comments. But since this particular item is not a production plan, I think the direction that those not be considered in our decision-making process are quite appropriate. Second, I think we've had the opportunity to really examine this pretty carefully. We've allowed and invited robust discussion from community members, both fourteen speakers and some two hundred and twenty or so letters. And among the letters, I'd just like to interject, I feel, you know, the most impactful letters are from people, personally crafted letters from people adjacent to these sites that may potentially have personal impacts. Next in line would be letters from groups, either more remote from the site. To that effect, we had, I think we've had seven or eight letters from people who do live in the Cuama Valley near the site. We've had other such letters from people in more remote levels. Next down the ladder, in terms of influence, at least for me, are letters from individuals who are getting paid to be here or paid to comment, executive directors, attorneys, et cetera. Then down the line to perhaps what I would say are the least impactful, basically copy and click form letters from people mostly who are remote to the area. So just my kind of weighting. I don't use strict numbers of comment letters, which I have heard people do in the past. I feel that a letter that is personally crafted reflects personal impacts, deserves the highest level of consideration, and it goes downward from there, so to speak. Now, with respect to what we've heard today and with respect to potential approval of this program, we've heard many concerns, many quite valid, particularly the water concern, but I think it's been demonstrated by applicant that fully acceptable safety measures will be taken during the construction of this well. It's been shown that the water derived on site will be about a hundred and fifty thousand gallons, which is, to me, acceptable. And keep in mind, the water used for that drilling mud, generally the drilling mud's recycled throughout the process so far as possible. So I find a little real concern with that. Some comments with respect to the need for a full EIR. I think with respect to this, the mitigated negative declaration for this event is adequate. I would think, however, that at such time, if recoverable, economically recoverable deposits are located, at that time, I could be in support of a full EIR for a production plan for this site, which is much more robust and over a far greater timeframe than this, and would include, obviously, many wells instead of one carefully controlled well. Visual impact, I would like to thank Mr. Chitilo for the photographs included in his letter, which indicate from Highway one sixty-six, the visible portion of the drilling rig would subtend only a few seconds of angle, probably somewhat less than the bug splats on your windshield. I would suggest the operator may want to remove the American flag from the top of the rig to make it nearly invisible. So I think the visual impact element, unless you were parked looking for it, I don't think it would be noticeable. But since the normal potential observer is going to be traversing one sixty-six from a distance of over a mile at a speed of sixty-five or seventy miles an hour, I don't really foresee that as an issue. Finally, few speakers have mentioned Harvard, Brodeia, and I admit, I'm no great fan of Harvard, of its trust, particularly in some recent developments that have been well-publicized. I believe, I find it quite amusing that any effort to increase oil extraction is a direct conflict with their public position. But while I find that amusing, I also find that there is no, that's no basis that this applicant should enjoy any less opportunities or protections than any other landowner in California or in Santa Barbara County. And finally, I think the forgotten population in this whole element are, and I have no idea who they are, but the royalty owners who actually own the rights to the minerals produced as a result of this operation. I think they should also be afforded, in the event this is successful, the ability to participate in the proceeds and benefits of it, if and at such time, a real production plan is ever created and approved. So I suppose by now you've figured out my inclination is greatly toward approving this process, this project as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. I'll jump over to here. Commissioner Park.
I think Commissioner Reed's comments were very well-stated, and I agree with them to a point, but not entirely. And don't feel bad about that because I don't agree with anyone entirely, including myself most of the time. I want to address the role of the Planning Commission here, and then state some personal experiences that I am relying on in terms of making a decision. I think they should be made explicit to the commission, and then state my conclusion. You know, when I picked this up on Thursday, which wasn't so long ago, and then especially I was driving out there, I was kind of excited about this project, just kind of my initial reaction, because, you know, I have a lot of extended family people in the oil patch. I like dealing with oil patch people. I like big machines that you can touch. And I, but I also like it in the oil patch. There's a lot of intellectual excitement about all the science and technology. I just kind of like it. And I have a friend who's got a ranch. It's the very next ranch. If you go up the road, you go through a yellow gate, and that's his ranch, the Phoenix Ranch. And I'm kind of curious about what's down there, to tell you the truth. And the other thing, just from a big-picture point of view, I know that for a long time, the Cuama fields were known for producing a very light crude, in that, you know, light crude is brought into our Cat Canyon and other facilities. If you go out to Cat Canyon, one out of every four trucks, one out of every five, maybe Mr. Briggs knows better than I do, but it's something like that. It's actually bringing crude in, not out. And it's bringing it in to dilute the heavy crude so they can process it. And I even had an idea in mind years ago that if we did get a new pipeline, which I guess we're not going to get now, and once they had the trench open, put in even another one, a little smaller one that could transport light crude into our Santa Barbara fields, you know. So all that's kind of exciting to me. But, you know, just because I kind of like it, doesn't mean that that's my job as a planning commissioner. And, you know, and so, you know, I know it can create jobs. I can know a lot of good things for oil. And I know we need California oil for our California refineries to make California-specified gas. And if we're going to stay the fourth-largest economy in the world, we ought to pay attention to our oil supply, our local oil supply. I get all those things, but they don't go to what we're supposed to be doing as planning commissioners. And I look to the other side. Most of the letters, much of the comment, as always is the case on these oil ones, is from people that say, we have climate change, we shouldn't allow one more ounce of oil to be produced, and because it's only going to further climate change. And I get all that. I can kind of sympathize with it. But I think those are decisions to be made by the California Legislature, if not the U.S. Congress. We are not a legislative body. It's really not up to us to be pro-oil or anti-oil. If we had a feedlot project up at the San Marcos Golf Course, okay, somebody could say, oh, I'm all in favor of the feedlot because I like hamburgers. And somebody else could say, well, I'm a vegan. I don't think you should allow any cattle to get grown. It's not the planning commission's decision. We're not anti-oil. We're not pro-oil, or we shouldn't be. I'm not. What I am is pro-following the law, and the law is SEQA. So I want to analyze SEQA and do the job we're supposed to do. We get to SEQA. Okay, here's some of my personal experiences that bear on it and I'm thinking about. One, on what's a proper botanical survey, I had the pleasure of being best friends nearly all my adult life with Michael Benedict, a botanist, and we spent mini a day on our bellies looking at botany, okay, looking at plants. And he loved annuals. And annuals, you have to catch them get just right, and sometimes they're very tiny. I had the pleasure, and I was in 2018 or was it 2019, of leading out some of the Santa Barbara Botanical Garden expeditions into the Zocca Fire Burn Scar pursuant to a grant to locate rare plants. And I did botany with Denise Knapp. I noticed that she's one of the signatories now in the letter. So I think the fact that my other four commissioners voted to admit that, that letter, you were all smarter than I was because you actually looked who signed it. And Denise, I know very well because we spent several days on some of these trips. Why did they enlist me? Because I had the horses to ferry the botanists around, and I knew the trails in the backcountry. And I know that this would drive Denise Knapp, Dr. Knapp, crazy, seeing last-minute surveys and trying to decide whether there's a rare plant there or not. And this is a rare plant. If you look at the Blakely spine flower, it's only been sighted seven times, and it's named after Jim Blakely, who was kind of our father of the Los Padres National Forest in its current appreciation by people. And I worked with Steve Junack as well in nearby Deal Canyon Ranch on Nuevo. And you get down on your belly and you look for things. You have to be very careful. You got to catch it at just the right time. Sometimes it goes years without seeing an annual appear, and then it shows up because of the rains or the warmth and those kinds of things. Further experience, I have this site. I remembered it really well after I started looking at the Google Earth and seeing exactly where it is. My friend owns a ranch next to it. I've probably ridden through there on horseback, that exact site, about a hundred times. Because if you're going down the road, schoolhouse, and then you're going to bear over to Cottonwood Canyon and eventually cross under to the Cuama River, you start bearing off right about where that site is, off to the left, off to the west. And I know that, well, and in discussing it with my friend, and in discussing the local geology as part of our review of the Northforth projects, what you've got in that little flat site, and then is just to the north is ravine. There's a series of ravines. And when you get a lot of water, water spills out, okay, into that plain. That's why it would get muddy some years when we were doing it by horseback. And seeds spill out from the chaparral and the oak woodland that's up the ravines. And things start to happen out there on the plains, and you see it in wet years. Another thing you have going on there, and I think Dr. Gleason would be very familiar with this, is you have perched water tables. You have some. You can drill a long ways to water, but there's some perched water tables that are only down about twenty-five, thirty feet from the surface in some of those ravines and hills. My friend's ranch house, it will actually bubble up through the ground in certain wet years. And again, you get a lot of springs up those ravines, which will produce water. So it's a tricky little area, and you got to know it well. On the Northforth project, when it first came to us, was that 2018, 2019? I can't recall exactly, but it was something like that. And we had a similar biological report that says there's nothing here. There's no natives. I thought, I don't believe this because I personally observed them. You just have to find them at the right time. And I made the point at that one that the MND was inadequate and that we should have an EIR. And some of you actually agreed, some of the members of the commission, and that was the result of that first hearing. I was roundly criticized by the applicants, some commissioners, some staff, newspapers, et cetera, for what a harebrained idea that it needed an EIR. Lo and behold, when the EIR came out, it said, oh, there's a native grassland there, right underneath one of the Frost Pond reservoirs. And so, you know, sometimes it does pay to do this stuff, to take an extra look. Here we have kind of a backstop designed into the project that before construction actually starts in the fall, there would be another survey, and they'd look for these various plants and collect seeds. There aren't going to be any visibility of these plants in the fall, and there won't be any seeds available to collect. You'd have to be doing that in the spring. I don't think that's an adequate backstop. I am not convinced by what we've seen, that's kind of filtered in at all the wrong times, about what exists there botanically. I am not real clear about the water issues. I just know there are water issues and waste disposal issues. I cannot personally make the findings in order to use the MND as the basis, making the findings to approve this project. I don't think there's been adequate environmental review, and I think that leads to other issues. So I believe there should be an EIR. I'm not a person who believes we should deny the project because it involves oil. I think we should do our job and force SEQA. I think to do that and do it with some credibility, we need to have an EIR. So there's my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Park. And then we have Commissioner Riley.
It's nice going last because everybody's made a lot of good points. I appreciate Commissioner Cooney's struggle, actually, the public struggle, the staff's, my struggle with this two-stage system that's already codified in our ordinances. And I think, like I said earlier during questions, I think that's peculiar to this industry. So I'm not as agitated about that as I might be for a lot of other sectors, because it would never happen in another sector. You wouldn't look at a grading plan and then two years later say, oh, if the grading works out, we're going to come in with five hundred units, right? So this is peculiar to this industry. So I also want to encourage the neighbors that are opposed to this well drilling to not give up the fight. But right now, we're bound by what this ordinance allows us to do. And that is this drilling first and then a production plan later. So the reason it's so emotional right now is that we're also facing every other quarter, you know, discussion about greenhouse gases and clean air plants, and this is all dancing around right when the county has strengthened some of those policies. So understanding that, that's all happening over there, but right now, this is still compliant with the ordinance. So we have to go by it. So I'm persuaded by that more. When it comes to the SEQA analysis, I probably concur with most of the commissioners to say, you know, there was a little awkward stuff today about the lead transmittal and a couple of other things, but I don't think, because this is just a drilling permit, that it warrants an environmental impact report. I do want to say in the next breath that the applicant should be well-aware that the production plan will probably require a, you know, a full environmental impact report or statement at that time, but that's the risk they're taking. That's the risk they're taking. So I'm inclined to actually approve the project with probably a couple cleanup things through the MND and maybe the conditions of approval. And I can just, you know, there's a couple of things about there, like caught in the project description that it was approximately twenty-four days. Well, maybe, you know, maybe we want to say twenty-four to thirty-six days or something, because I don't want to end up where we were with Strauss, where forwards and a condition caused them another, you know, year to come back and ask for a substantial performance. So let's just make sure that this is going to work on all levels, right? And then there's a couple other points about where the water's coming from, because I because I know that was uh, important feedback from the public. It actually caught my attention when I talked to members of the public too. Um, initially it was would be imported, but we didn't know. There was going to be onsite. So let's be specific that it's just onsite as opposed to somewhere else, right? Um, those are probably the only two things about cleanup conditions. So, um, again, I appreciate the struggle with facing greenhouse gas reduction mandates. And yet this is just a phase one. And I particularly appreciate the individual because the whole time I was thinking and hearing all the testimony was camel, um, camel's nose in the tent. That is exactly what this is. They get in there and then, but, you know, they have to understand that's a business decision. So those are my thoughts. I'm probably inclined to support it, not recommend an EIR at this stage. And um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. And then um, I guess it's my opportunity to say my my point at this time. I'll, I'll, Mr. Commissioner, how about one minute? Um, I I just don't like to to regurgitate what has been said here because I agree with so much of what's been said. But in in conclusion, I agree with the most pointed um, issue here, which is what does the ordinance say and what is the ordinance requesting of us? And I believe we're addressing that. And um, I'm going to be one that would be in favor of the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Um, well, it comes back here um, to the first district. And uh, I want to say a couple of things in the in the course of this particular project that are uh, appropriate to say. One is, uh, we have some of the most qualified, capable people serving as our staff on this project. And uh, I I will admit, I left a voicemail for Aaron Briggs uh, yesterday in saying, how could you possibly support this project based on a uh, mitigated negative declaration? And he met me at the door this morning and uh, with his very capable uh, staff, Katie Knoll. And and uh, they gave me a lot of good reasons, particularly that that's our way of doing things in Santa Barbara County. As sure as we can anticipate all the potential environmental impacts of a of a development project, should it occur, we're not. We would be making, I think, uh, too long a jump to say uh, until it's a full environmental impact report, we're not going to go forward with this project. Um, and it it really goes against my grain because uh, having gone through the Frost Pond projects and uh, and seeing the effect of um, oil drilling and oil production in the Quayama Valley, um, the the impacts are significant. And in my view, they outweigh the benefits of throwing a little more oil into the into the production phase. But um, I, like several of my fellow commissioners, I feel bound by the rules that we're assigned to look at and by the staff recommendations based on those rules. So this will be a rare uh, vote for me in favor of approving staff's recommendation. So um, if someone, Commissioner Reed, would you like to um, recite the um, action that that we're to take at this point?
Uh, Chair and Commissioners, um, we did hear a couple of things during deliberation. I think Commissioner Riley mentioned some revisions to project description. So whoever wants to make that motion or if you want to deliberate on Commissioner Riley's suggestions, I think staff may be prepared to um, address those. Um, I just wanted to remind the commission that that was on the deliberation. And and I think one of them is a project description change as far as the timing. So we just want to get a head nod from the applicant that they're okay with um, tightening up that um, project description as far as the the time. But Chair, I'll turn it back to you as far as how you guys want to handle that.
Yes, and I understand what the suggestion is. I guess it comes down to somebody making the motion to include that in the motion. So um, that would, those are the two subjects that would be included in a motion if so done. Does anybody have that motion or else?
Chair Martinez and Commissioners, we've been speaking with staff. And if you want to be more specific about the day instead of approximately twenty-four, I think staff has a recommendation based on what was studied in the MND.
Staff, if we could give us that.
Uh, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, so because the MND analysis was based upon twenty-four days of drilling activity, we recommend rather than approximately twenty-four days, changing that to up to twenty-four days. And the applicant has agreed to that. And we also recommend specifying that the water would be obtained from the site as stated by the applicant on the record today.
Okay, so is, so is what's up there, you're talking about the?
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I think, I think one other clarification was the waste disposal. I know he stood up and articulated where he's going to take it. I don't know if you want that to be re-clarified by the applicant at the podium? Uh, where the, where would it be taken?
Yeah, where they're going to take it to McGettrick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I I mean, i- is it possible then that with what we have up here that we can retype it and then include those now? Because we're up to three, what I'm hearing. So if we're up to those three elements that we just included within the staff recommendation today, somehow then we just read from it? Could we, would time allow us to do that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we could type it in. We probably just need a moment to do so and put it back up on the.
Okay, so then let's just take a ten-minute.
Um, that sounds good.
I was going to say recess, but ten-minute break. And then we'll be right back at um, um, two twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.